The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and or their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, excuse me, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Donna, if you, well, is it Donna who'll introduce the first case?
PB 1502-2, upon the matter of request by Romeo Land Limited for preliminary and final site plan approval to demolish existing building and construct a new 1,572 square foot Dunkin' Donuts with drive-through and related parking, signage, landscaping, and other related improvements on premises 1220 East Ridge Road currently or past battling instant oil change in the C business district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Romeo. I'm the owner of Romeo Land Limited. We've here, been here a couple of times talking with you about this project. We've made quite a bit of progress since the last time I was here. Let me just give you a quick update. I mean, do you want me to give you an overview of the whole project again, or is everybody comfortable with it?
Give us a little bit of an overview.
Okay. There's an existing vacant building there that was housed by various oil change operations, gasoline station many, many years ago. We are under contract to purchase that property for the development of a Dunkin' Donuts store. That store will be approximately 1,500 square feet with a drive-through window, interior seating. We plan on demolishing the existing building, whatever site improvements are there, and reconstructing that building. It's a slab-on-grade construction, wood-framed building with cement-board siding. You should have copies of the elevations. I can put one up, or there is one up behind me already. We've, we've been here before. We've talked about this. We've submitted this out to Monroe County DOT. They've examined the site plan quite closely over the last several weeks. We've got some comments back from them about the ingress and egress, both on Portland Avenue and on Ridge Road, and we've agreed, we have an agreement with the Monroe County DOT to modify those ingress and egress points on Portland and Ridge to their satisfaction. Specifically on Ridge Road, we're going to be having a right turn in and a right turn out, and we've made some moves to our, some modifications to our site plan, moving our ordering menu board and the location of the pickup window in order to get more stacking for the, for the drive-through cars on-site. We also needed several variances for setbacks and for parking. We went, took a trip over to the zoning board of appeals. We obtained all of our variances. In our initial application, we were going to have a freestanding pylon sign at the corner of Ridge and Portland. We withdrew that pylon sign from the application some time ago when we were here. The sign, as we are proposing, it meets the minimum or the maximum requirements or minimum requirements. We're within code for the signage we are proposing. And I think, I think that's about it. Is there questions?
Did you mention the off-site parking?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. As part of the application, we needed some additional parking spaces, and in order to do that, we, we obtained seven parking spaces down at Georgetown Plaza, which is where Keenan's is, in case you don't know the name of the Plaza. So we, we believe we needed five spots, and we contracted with them for seven spots. And our employees of Dunkin' Donuts will be parking there.
And you have that agreement in writing?
We have it in writing. It's subject to approval by the town board, as you know. We'll be submitting that, you know, as part of the closing of this application, hopefully in the near future, to the town board. And we've submitted the initial agreement that we do have in writing. I believe Nick has a copy of that.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my, my questions, I, I think other people have other questions, but my questions are mainly about signage. The new site plan that we just received tonight, Romeo, has a freestanding sign near the corner here. Is that just a directional sign?
Yes, there are directional signs at both entrances, or will be directional signs at both entrances.
Okay. I'm glad to see the pylon signs going. There's one other concern that I have, and I, as I'm, you know, I, I'm looking at this, and I know that you're, you know, for a, for a commercial district, you're within code for the square footage of the signs that you have. But the, the site itself is considerably smaller than a normal commercial district building, so the, the only signs that I, that you have left that I'm, I'd like to see removed are actually the coffee cups along, on the side, on the east and west elevations of the building, if you look at S7. If I look at that building, you've got big Dunkin' Donuts signs in the middle, or, and then along the sides, on three of the four sides, and that, I, I think that, for the most part, the, the building is pretty nice without that coffee cup. The, I like the, the scale going from a, something like tan to something like gray on the bottom. That looks nice. Without that there, I think it would look a lot nicer. So that's one of the things I'm going to propose when we get around to that. And that's pretty much all I have. I don't think I, there's really any questions there. That's just basically.
I, I can address that for you if you'd like. I am the developer, contractor, and will be the landlord-owner of this property. I don't operate this store. In addition to having the local operator that runs the store and has to agree to this, Dunkin' Donuts corporate, Dunkin' Brands had to agree to all of these changes. It was quite a process for us to get the drive-through, or not the drive-through, but the pylon sign removed from the site plan, and one of the big things Dunkin' Brands was very interested about was having all the signage that they wanted in, on the building. I can't agree to it tonight. It's, it's a process to do that, and I, I don't think I'd be very successful with Dunkin'. But just my opinion. I didn't say I wouldn't try and do it, but I, I can't do it for you right now.
Well.
And we are in compliance.
Agreed. You're in compliance.
And this is brand-new coming up, and you certainly have the right to bring it up anytime you want, but I, this is the fourth time I've been here.
Clarification, it's not brand-new. We talked about it the first time you were in front of us. I brought it up.
Okay.
And, and we talked about it at length, about how we didn't care for that.
We talked about the cup or the pylon?
The cup.
The cup and the, we talked about the pylon and the cup.
The cup's on the building.
We may have talked about it. I don't recall that. I, I, as I say, it was a process to get that pylon removed. I agree with you on the pylon. I shouldn't say that too loud. Nobody's heard from Dunkin', but I agree. The building is close to the road. It's a tight site, but there's nothing I could do about it. I can't stretch that land, and we certainly like to, you know, these chains all want their brand. They all want their image, just like the other, you know, chain operators that are on Ridge Road, both food and non-food.
I understand that, Mr. Romeo. I, I'm looking at the signage that's on the building, and I'm looking at the relative size of the, of the, of the lot, and it, it seems, even with that, it's, it's not excessive. But I, I think that, and I don't know if everyone on the board agrees, but I think that the coffee cup just detracts from the, the look of the building. Without the coffee cup on there, it really isn't, it's a, it's a pretty nice building. With it on there, it's certainly not as nice, and I, and I mean, that's within our purview to, to do that, and I, if you, you say that you're going to try to get it, I don't know what.
I don't know what that means either.
I don't know what it means.
I would sure like to leave and be done with this project and, and get it in the ground, hopefully, at some point in time this year.
I, I understand.
And Mr. Richie, just so I'm clear, using what's behind you, you're talking about the large cups next to the drive-through window and next to the front?
Yes. Those two are right there, yes. You still have the, the big Dunkin' things on, on those two sides, as well as, I believe, on the north elevation as well.
I, I hear you, and I, I can't do a thing to help you, unfortunately, with, with that piece.
I'm pretty sure that, if there were still a space shuttle, they could identify this, the Dunkin' Donuts here with those, with the signage of the.
That would be great, wouldn't it? Everybody'd know where Aranda Quay was.
So, um, I'll, that's the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, and I, I think others will have other questions about things, but I'll stop there.
Rich?
You got a chance to review the letter from HIP?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I, I just wanted a clarification. What I see on the plans is one dumpster. It seems to me they're insinuating there's two dumpsters there.
I have no idea. I, I read the letter, and I'm not sure what they were looking at, if they were.
Your understanding is there's going to be one dumpster?
One dumpster. And from the, that's another thing. From the first time we were here, we were proposing a screened-in dumpster with some vinyl fencing. We've since changed that, and we've submitted to you, you know, for concrete enclosure for that dumpster.
I, I guess, I, I don't have any other specific questions. I do have a comment. I was very, very concerned about the traffic flow in the area. At our last workshop, we asked LaBella to take a look at, at, at the study that was done, and, and obviously, MCDOT has weighed in on it. I have been to the location at various times during the morning and afternoon to watch the traffic flow. I've also been there on the weekend to watch. Based upon all of the reports we've had and the comments from Mr. Romeo, I am a lot less concerned about the traffic now than I was throughout the whole process. I, I at no time saw any terrible problem with traffic going southbound on Portland. Obviously, you're going to add a lot of traffic, hopefully, to the location, but I, I think the biggest thing for me was at the workshop, Mr. Chairman's comments and some other comments that were made that, you know, we, we want traffic on Ridge Road. We want businesses to be successful on Ridge Road. Where we draw the line is if it's going to be dangerous, and, and I'm satisfied at this point, from what I've seen, that it's not a danger. I think it's going to be a challenge. I think, I think you're, you're going to have to be vigilant about a lot of the things you do on the property if it gets approved because of the nature of the size of it, but I'm, I'm less concerned about the traffic now than I was throughout the whole process. So that, that's my, my general comments, and I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Ray?
Good evening, Frank.
Hello, Ray.
Couple of questions for you. What time would deliveries come into the location? And, and by the way, Frank, can you, maybe you can't tell me, and I'm sure you almost can't. Is it a 40 footer, 48 footer, or 53 footer that brings in deliveries?
You know, I do know, actually. Typically, it's a 35-foot tractor-trailer, you know, but all these companies.
Trailer or the truck included?
Well, the trailer.
Okay.
Okay. If you take a look, we've supplied you with some tracking plants, and I think there's a 43-foot trailer that we used on the, on the tracking plants. All these companies have every single size tractor-trailer, straight unit, you know, can I tell you which one they're going to use on any given day? No. But typically, it's a tractor-trailer. Typically, it comes during the day. We kind of had this, this talk before, you know, their deliveries.
I just have some clarification, is Frank.
But, but we have supplied you with a tracking plan of how, of how that would work.
The other thing, question for you, as it relates to the retaining wall on the north side.
Yes, the one that's adjacent to the Giltner property. Yes.
Yes. I'm led to believe, and I could be wrong, that Giltner owns that retaining wall?
That's correct. If you take a look at the, we supplied a, a new revised S1 drawing today, and it, it very clearly is marked on there, the north and the west retaining walls that are both not on this property. They're both on the adjacent properties, owners' properties.
Frank, has anybody thought of, or, and maybe this is inappropriate, maybe it is not, because it is kind of a slope with heavy equipment and so forth going through there, the amount of cars and so forth, does anybody have any, like a geotechnical thought process as to what will happen to, at that area? Does it need more reinforcement?
Have we done a geotechnical investigation back there? No, I'm waiting to take the building down so we can, can really get in and do our geotech work for where our building's going to set. But, you know, how far are you going to go? Are you going to go on somebody else's property and rebuild their wall for them? They probably like that, but I'm not sure I want to ask them, even though he's here tonight. I don't want to ask them that.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just asking.
He thinks I'm going to take the wall down, I heard a rumor, which I'm not going to be taking it down.
You can build it.
No, 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 no. That wall is beautiful. It's covered with very, very well-grown ivy and plantings. We don't want to disturb that. All I could tell you is, like in any project, if we damage something, you know, we're responsible to take care of it, you know? You, I'm not going to say everybody knows me, but, you know, we're, we've been around a while, and.
I do.
You know, you know, I know you do, but if we do something wrong, we've got to be held responsible. There's plenty of ways within the town with building permits and C of O's and plenty of enforcement action to happen. I'm not suggesting we need any of that stuff, but, you know, it's.
One last question, Frank. In the April 13th letter to Mr. Weatherby.
From whom?
From Brent H. Penwarden.
Penwarden, yes. Yes, Brent's a fine, fine gentleman.
And the last paragraph, it says, between the queuing of vehicles, the main board, and those exiting, entering, and I'm sure you've read this, via Portland Avenue, "We believe there is a possibility for gridlock to current site. In turn, this could quickly spill out onto Portland Avenue. We will allow full access at this location, but again, will require the owner to sign an agreement with the county regarding future mitigation should an accident concern development at this location." To me, that's almost as if they're unsure, you know, like they're thinking.
Have you dealt with anyone in government?
Since yesterday?
I, I, I'm not sure that they're unsure. I think that they're, want us to be responsible in case something happens in the future. If there's more traffic that comes there, and there is gridlock, there's a series of accidents, and they want to put some improvements in, we've agreed to do that. We've agreed to enter into that agreement with the county. We don't see that as a problem. They sent out an email today to the town and myself and a bunch of people. I don't know if it was distributed to you. It should have been. Maybe I, I could defer to Mr. Weatherby.
Yeah, it was, it was distributed, and I can also comment that there's been a couple of projects even last year that signed these traffic mitigation agreements that are fairly standard. Over the course, if there is issues with the site, then the applicant would be liable to help mitigate them.
Okay.
Frank, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Bernie?
Hi. So during all the discussions, I think the one thing that we didn't talk about so far is snow removal. And from my visit to one of the sites you said to go visit over on Dewey, it seemed like the snow was a, was a problem, the way it piled up because of this year. But I saw the note that you included with the package regarding your standard.
That, that is our standard exhibit, I don't know, B or C to our snow removal contract with the properties that we maintain. It's pretty, it's pretty stiff.
Okay. So you, you wrote in this note, "Let's discuss" to the town, so was there any discussion that we weren't privy to?
Uh, no, I, I guess I should, I should have cleaned up my handwritten notes on there or, or whatever it is.
No, it just said.
You want to, you want to address it and take responsibility?
Absolutely. I, I get through the second page of a snow removal document. I, I kind of thought after the first page, it was, it was pretty thorough, so maybe I missed the language at the end, but.
Well, this was sent to the town for discussion purposes. You're saying the town, and I, I mean, we've read it, and.
Well, and I, and I called Frank. I called Frank. We got this more, I mean, it's more than acceptable to, for something that we would seek for our property.
Right.
It's all going to be taken off-site.
I think Frank is providing the exhibit, which explains their snow removal guidelines, which I think should weley the, any concerns that we had as a release of snow removal.
Right. So my, my question is, is this part of the, the submission, the package? Because it's just given to us as a copy.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I just like the exhibits we get back from DOT, so that can be part of the, the package.
Do we have to say it's part of the approval process, is what I want to understand?
I, I don't, I don't believe so. I think you can say that all snow can be taken off-site, but if you wanted to.
I mean, that was the only problem I saw with the small space was, how is the snow removal going to happen not?
Well, I gotta tell you, Bernie, not only, we use that contract for every size property that we have. You know, when you're dealing with retailers that want to have customers come in, it's paramount to have that snow removed and have that, you know, those driveways clean, ice-free, so people can, you know, not only maneuver their cars, but walk into your business. So it's not, that is not created just because this is a small site. We do that as, as our daily routine.
I, I look at this as a, may I?
Yeah.
May I interject for a minute? I'm sorry, Bernie.
No, go ahead.
I, I look at the agreement. I, I've read it, and it, it sounds pretty stringent, and it's between the contractor and the, and the owner-operator.
Well, between the, well, between the property owner and, and/or the operator and the, the contractor.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's certainly up to town standards, is it not, Nick?
Yes, I mean, especially if you were saying that as part of this approval, that snow's taken off-site, because we've talked about that, right? There's not a portion of this that is, no, snow's staying on-site. So however they get it off-site, this is more thorough than any agreement that I've come across.
I mean, if we, if we, if we chose to, we could say, "Snow removal as per agreement."
Sure, or you can just say that all snow will be removed on, from site, because there isn't a snow remo. Often times, when you see a site plan and snow's not being removed, you'll see on the site plan, "This is for snow storage." That's not a part of the site plan, because we've already talked about all snow being taken off-site as part of the site plan. So if you want to write that into the conditions.
Yeah, that would be appropriate, or if you wanted to specifically reference, you know.
Let's label Exhibit A, we can just refer to Exhibit A provided by the applicant.
One question I, if I may interject, Mr. Chairman. One question I have, Nick, is if 60% of our business is between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM, and that's when we anticipate the most backup into Portland Avenue, et cetera, when is the snow going to be removed? What time of day?
Well, you know, I'm sure there's a, there's a whole building full of guys over there that'll tell you, they'll go out in the middle of the night. I mean, oftentimes, plow operators are out well before any of us are going about our business, so.
And especially for commercial properties that have hours of operation, they'd be getting sick.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not uncommon for the, the snow, for it to be being cleaned up. Actually, it's the most common time for it to be cleaned up is 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning.
Generally, off-site snow removal's in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
So we, we can put that in?
That all snow will be taken off-site. We're not going to stipulate that.
Yeah, I wouldn't get into the details of the timing, because you don't know when the snow's going to be falling.
What if a ton of snow comes during the day?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a bunch of snow coming at 7:00 o'clock, I would prefer that they.
You got to give us a little bit of, you know.
I can't tell.
We want it to be between 6:00 AM and 6:10 AM.
Okay. I'll be referred to your house.
My name's Weatherby, not Weatherman, so I mean, I can't, you know. I can, I can take you away with this one, but.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have one more question about the snow removal. But, but, but it doesn't say anywhere in here that it's. Well, we, we don't, this, this snow removal contract under Item 9, it says, "Contractor will relocate snow," but it doesn't say anything about relocating. It doesn't say, none of these really say anything about removal from the site.
Correct.
And if we say that we're going to remove all snow.
Well, where are they going to put it? Back on the, in the driveway and the dumpster? I mean, relocating the snow is not going to be putting it back in another parking stall.
You can just make it part of the approval that all snow is removed from the site. I mean, we've already, that's been settled.
I, I don't want them to have to remove snow if there's only a half inch.
I understand.
That's, that's, so there's, I, this really, this, this agreement doesn't look like what we're talking about.
It says, Item 9, it says, "Contractor will relocate snow that is accumulated during the term. If such accumulation begins to impair access to the property entrance, fire lanes, interior roadways, or designated parking stalls." I mean, that's pretty clear.
Right, but it also says above that, that they, they can push it to the farthest part on the site, so there's wiggle room in Paragraph 9, for sure.
It's the farthest room on the site, but if it impairs parking stalls, then they have to remove it.
Right, so, so long as it's not impairing parking, drive aisles, or any other traffic circulation issues on-site, they could leave it there, but as soon as it starts to interfere, they'd have to remove it.
Right. It's got to go on the. This, this, it seems to, you're the lawyer. No, I'm not the lawyer, but this, this, it, it's a, it's a judgment call of what dozen, dozen, you know, constitute.
I don't think there's any judgment call in here. I mean, it's pretty clear, and, I mean, we're trying to legislate every possible instance of snow removal.
I don't want to legislate all the removal.
I mean, we're putting in here that the snow needs, that impairs parking needs to be removed off-site as part of our agreement as per Exhibit A, and I don't know that we need to be any more clear than that.
Is there another specific? I was just going to say, is there another specific instance that you think should be addressed?
I just got this at quarter of seven, so I had five minutes to read, five, 10 minutes to read.
I mean, Frank, was this prepared by an attorney and vetted by a real estate attorney and, and used time and again through lease?
Time and time again. I, I don't think I've thought about it this much.
Has there been any litigation involving snow removal associated with this agreement?
Mostly to push the snow, though. That's the thing. This is, we're talking about snow removal most of the time here.
Well, why don't, we'll give you a little bit of time to come up with some changes that you might want to have them consider to the snow removal agreement.
Thank you.
Bernie?
So I want to go back to a question. So my question is going to be, once we either remove the snow, move the snow, or whatever we're doing. What role does the town play if this does become a problem? I'm just thinking, because of the tight space.
There's many.
If they push the snow and block the view of the road, things like that. So how does that get?
There's many, there's many properties that you can, that you can look at, that say either snow, storage area. This one, we've been very, it's been very clear, the applicant has said and provided documentation, they're taking the snow off-site. If there is a problem, we get calls at DPW all the time, if there's an issue. I'm sure we'll be the first to hear about it, but I'll also say that the biggest impetus for wanting it clear is the business owner. The town obviously wants the sidewalks clear and to be a safe site, but the business owner wants to have a safe site. So we rarely have the problems with commercial properties unless you own the mall down the road. So we don't, I don't anticipate, this is the most, this is a very thorough agreement for snow removal. I think it's one of the more clearer portions of the application, but we can put snow removal taken off-site in the approval, right?
Yeah, that's appropriate.
So, I mean, I don't, we don't have an inch number that.
No. I mean, it's pretty clear that if it encumbers parking stalls, fire lanes, accessways, anything, it's, has to be removed.
I thought they looked thorough. I mean, this, this, I, I couldn't think of instances to add.
Mary, now, any?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, am I done?
Well, I thought you said one more question a minute ago, and then you asked the one question, so no, you may revisit your question.
Do you want another one?
Yeah, I want one more question. So in the HIP letter.
Yes.
Yes.
There was a reference to, I guess it was maybe opinion, but, you know, we, they wrote it, that basically the building doubles as a large billboard sign, and the building will be located next to one of the most pristine and well-kept properties in Aranda Quay, the funeral home. And I thought you said, correct me if I'm wrong, that the funeral home was very much in favor of this project.
Well, are you?
Well, let's, no, he, if he can bring up his own testimony at the time right now.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's what I was.
My conversations with the Giltners, they've been in favor of it. They're here tonight, they're free to come up and speak whenever you ask them to, and they can tell you in their own words. As far as the signature sign and all that, I mean, of course it is. It's a restaurant. Everybody wants that, you know? They're pointing out the obvious, yes.
Right, but I thought you said that they were in favor of cleaning up that corner.
Who?
The funeral home.
The funeral home is, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to confirm what I heard.
I, I, I'm speaking for them, but again, they're here, they can speak for themselves when the time is right.
Besides that, that's it.
Mary?
I too have been to the site several times, and I'm still trying to figure out how we're putting 50 pounds of potatoes in a 30-pound bag, but we'll see. I'm a little concerned about the employee parking being so far away. But I realize that this is all you've got. And the other thing I had was, my concern was the, the wall on the funeral home side. I didn't realize it was the funeral home's problem. Other than that, I'm, I'm good. I talked to a colleague tonight, and he kind of helped me out with some of my thoughts.
It, it, let me just say, it's not a problem for the funeral home, okay? If we do something that's a catastrophe and we cause that problem, it is clearly our problem, and it goes with any neighbor. I mean, if they did something wrong and it impacted us, we would expect them to take care of it. So it is, it is not their problem if we do something wrong.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm good to go.
Good?
Yes, honestly.
At this time, I'd like to open up to public input. Step to the podium, address the podium with your name and address, and please provide us your input.
My name is Alan Giltner. I own the funeral home, Drier Giltner, north of the proposal here, and I have a couple of questions. Do you mind submitting that, that poll back in so I can put my sign on it?
Absolutely.
No. I am concerned about the retaining wall. I mean, I never gave it a lot of attention until I've heard it a couple of times and watching your, on the TV. I mean, is there going to be a guard rail? How close is that wall, is your driveway coming to that retaining wall?
Pretty close.
Is there, is there going to be a guard rail there that protects the cars from, if they park there, dropping over top of that retaining wall?
There's a concrete curb that is 1 foot 6 inches off the property line. There's no dimension on the existing boundary survey of where the existing retaining wall is, but I would say based on the scale, it's an additional 1 foot 6 inches away. So to me, there would be about a 3-foot separation between the curb and your retaining wall.
Okay, and do I get in a writing that if the retaining wall is, is destroyed, because you've got semis coming in there, you've got garbage trucks coming in there? I mean, there's going to be a lot of traffic, and that wall is, you know, it's not, it's, it's stones that are placed in there, blocks.
That's right.
And they have a, they could have a way of separating. And I guess one of my, and the next question is, when you say removing the snow, what do you really mean by removing the snow? I mean, you're going to get a back hole in there, and so you've got tractor trucks, back holes in there, you've got heavy equipment. Where are you going to put the snow? If you want to put in my parking lot and pull out my parking lot for me, that's fine, but, I mean, there, obviously, if you're that close to the retaining wall, you're going to be pushing the snow over top of my retaining wall, and I don't have a lot of place to push snow neither. You know, I push it up to the back of that retaining wall, and we lose probably 3, 4 spaces during the winter unless I get it hauled out of there. But if he is pushing the snow and it goes over on the retaining wall, it's more snow than I need that I already got there. So I'm just concerned bringing a back hole in there, taking the snow out. Other than that, how are you going to get the snow out of there? And I'm worried about the, I really think you need a, you know, something before besides that you're talking footing, or how high is your curb?
Curbs range between 6 to 7 inches.
I mean, I think you need a something there, because you've got, no offense to any of the older ladies in here, but they pull in there to park and they step on the gas instead of the brake, and now they're over the wall. Now, if you got a retain, something there to keep them, you know, it might help. Other than that, I, yes, I have no problem with Frank putting the donut place there, because, I mean, that corner's been a mess. And it's going to help us, it's going to clean up that corner, it's going, the appearance is going to be a lot better. But like I said, the retaining wall, what are you, where are you pushing the snow? That's my only problem. Questions?
Any other questions, concerns, or comments from the audience? Seeing none, we will close the public input session, portion of this tonight's hearing. Do you want to address the snow or the lack of a guard rail or curbing?
I think we beat the snow up pretty good. If it, if it goes on the Giltner property, we'll take it out. I, I don't know what else to say. We had a fence proposed for that north property line, and they didn't want the fence there.
Who's "they"?
Alan Giltner didn't want the fence when they first showed it to him, so we removed the fence. Now, it seems like he wants some other guard rail there. I'm not opposed to it, if that's what the board thinks they want to do, if you're so inclined, I'm not opposed to it. We're putting the fence back, we're putting the pylon sign back, but we won't go there now.
Would it be, would it be acceptable to have Mr. Romeo work up a letter that says that, you've already said verbally, that if, if that retaining wall goes down, you'll repair it?
I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to put it in writing for, for, for Mr. Giltner and be happy to supply the town with a copy. It's not an issue.
Can't ask for more. Or can you?
I don't know. I mean, no, we, I mean, we can't. I mean, I just wonder if a guard rail wouldn't benefit you as well as them.
I think so.
I think that a guard rail is in order.
Okay.
It's better than seeing a car fly over there.
Not a problem. I agree.
So maybe adding a guard rail along?
We'll, we'll add a guard rail with that, on that north, north property line.
A wood one or a steel?
I would like to see a steel one if we're going to put one up, but, you know, if you want wood, we can, we can put a wood one up.
I just wanted to see if there was any aversion to steel, because I think a steel would.
No, I prefer them. I mean, the wooden ones, you know, they look nice the first when you put them up, but after a couple of seasons, they don't look too good anymore, but.
Well, there's one there now, it don't look too bad.
The one that's there? We'd probably get something new. In fact, I'm sure we'd get something new.
I think a steel guard rail would be a good addition to the property, the north property line, if you're willing to accept that. Um, okay. How about the cup? I'm willing to state that I am unequivocal about the cup. I don't mind the cup, I kind of like the cup. I understand that the, I don't recall it, honestly, any conversation about the cup being eliminated as well as the pylon sign, but that's just my recollection.
There was.
But, where does the rest of the board sit on the cups?
I'm okay with a cup.
We're either going to ask this applicant to remove cups, and we're going to wait till we get consensus on that from them, or we're approving it with the cups. Looking at you, Bernie.
Is it improper to ask somebody in the audience what they think of the cup?
Yes, it is. Public input has been closed.
I kind of agree with Jay. I think the cups are kind of pushing it to a big billboard sign, so I think it would look classier with, even some of the pictures I saw of other Dunkin' Donuts had more subdued signage, so.
And we're only talking the small cups, not the large cup on the upper area?
Just as, just the cups on the, on the east and west elevation along the.
There's two cups there.
The darkest brown areas.
Mary? Cups or no cups?
No cup.
Ray?
No cups.
And Rich and Jay?
No cups.
So we're going to ask you to speak with the corporate about eliminating two cup signs as part of your conditions.
I will, I will.
We'll give you approval of the project without the cups, and then if you, if they want to come back, is there some sort of?
Yeah, you can do that. If you wanted to approve it tonight on the condition that they remove the cups, if that's a hardship and the applicant can't do it, then they can come back to you and ask for a revised approval, and you can revise the site plan approval.
And then we'll say no when they want to.
Or you can, right, or you can hold the application, by the way.
Excuse, they could come back under a sign application. Not, they don't have to come back under a site plan approval, would they? If they wanted to come back in a month or two or three?
Right, so, right, because you are issuing a separate signage application in addition?
I believe, yes, you would be under the signage permit, but then it would be under the purview of the director, whether it would have to go before the planning board, which I'm sure in this case it would be, yes, it would need to go before the planning board, and then it would be turned down again.
It would be a sign, it'd be a sign application at that point.
But the sign application in the commercial zone can be referred to the planning board.
Correct.
Correct.
And in that case, I would think it would be.
I'm saying, okay, that I understand you.
All right, good. All right, we need to do Seeker. So we've got a short environmental assessment form. I'm sure everyone has a copy of it. Has anyone had a chance to look at it or have any questions?
Yes, I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And this looks like it's, it's done well, and in addition to, there was one item on the, on the assessment form that was, there was a concern, and they've put some mitigations on the back. There's, there's also additional mitigations with respect to the size of the drive aisle, as well as the right-in, right-out on East Ridge Road. So the, those have, the mitigations that have been proposed are sufficient to knock that down to no impact or a small impact, I believe, as a result of the mitigations.
Are you saying there's something missing from the description of the mitigation, or it needs to be added, or?
I'm just saying that with, with what's on there is probably sufficient, but in addition to, if, if anyone here doesn't think that's sufficient, there's two other things that have been done as well. So it looks like it's been well mitigated, I guess, is the.
All right.
Mitigate or lose or something. It's been well, I, I don't see any issues with it, though. This, this looks, I don't know that we have to, do we have to read through all these, or, or do we have to read them out loud, or?
I don't think we have to read them out loud, do we, or?
No, not necessarily. You can all just take notice of what's in the, in the form.
Mr. Chairman, with respect.
Well, make notice for the public that the, every environmental impact has been no or small impact, with the exception of traffic, which had a moderate to large impact may occur. And the mitigating measures are then outlined on the back, which we've talked about here. They've revised the site plan and revised site access and addressed the concerns of the Monroe County DOT. So we feel that they are mitigating any negative impact as to greatest extent possible associated with traffic and parking, or traffic and circulation. So at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move Item PB 1502-2 with respect to Seeker. I move that this is an unlisted action, negative declaration.
Correct.
Yes.
Richie first, Lucky second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say nay.
Me opposed?
Or opposed. You said all those in favor.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. This short form is environmental assessment, it's a signature by the preparer. I know, but it's also missing the signature by the preparer. All right, so we're going to add conditions to, I'm assuming, provide preliminary and final site plan approval?
I have some listed here, Mr. Chairman, if you just want to write them down.
Yes.
I don't need to do the motion, but I had the, the signage, with respect to signage, there's no pylon and no coffee cups on the east and west elevations.
I would like to provide a better description of the sign that we are eliminating from the building, if there, if that could be possible.
Large coffee cups.
Large?
Against the back, it's with a brown, the darkest brown backdrop.
We need north, southeastern, west, upper, lower, brown, if there's anything.
On both, on both site plans there.
East and west elevation, near the cups with the DD on them.
And they're, they're more of a dec, maybe a decal?
Yes.
I would describe them as a decal sign, instead of, it's not a fixed external, like, mounted sign.
I would say the ones that are circled on the plan by Mr. Romeo.
Oh, perfect.
It's a brand sign.
So they're a DD with a cup?
One is. I think the other is not.
Yes.
And the, and the other one has no cup, or no DD?
No, no DD.
No, they both have DD.
No, they both do.
They both have DD.
Refer to them as a decal on the cement work siding.
And those around the, which?
Thanks.
Which, north and?
The east and west elevations.
East and west. East and west. Is that west at the back of the building?
Okay.
The second one is.
Hold on. What? So we've got no pylon, sign is allowed, elimination of the lower DD cup signs, decals on east and west elevations.
Yep. The next one is resolve open issues with Monroe County DOT, including entering into agreement regarding traffic mitigation if necessary.
And just so you guys know, you won't, the board, just so the board knows, typically they won't give you your work permits unless you've signed the agreement, so that's how those work.
Hold on. Please. Okay.
Add, add steel guard rail to north edge of, near north edge of property.
Okay.
Right. All employees required to park off-site. Is that what?
I don't know that that's.
Technically, the way that the code's written, you have to, that off-site parking can be for anyone. It can be a store policy that it's, you know, employee parking, but in theory, someone that wanted to utilize a store, and it was a full parking lot, they could park there and walk to the store as well. So I don't think you can specify.
Well, I'm just, the way that it was stated is that the employees were going to park off-site.
Yeah, and that would be the store policy, is that they would have their employees parked off-site. But I'm just saying, for the, for the purposes of approval of the agreement, it has to be open to everybody. It's not just employees. So.
Oh, right.
Not that you'd want to walk that far, Jake, for your Dunkin', but.
I guess, I guess, oh, I, if I'm going to eat a donut, I'm going to walk at least that far.
Yeah.
But, but if we're saying, I'm not saying that, that employees, that other people can't park there, I'm saying that all employees have to park off-site, which is different than what you're saying.
I don't, yeah, we're not.
I don't know that you need to specify that in the conditions of the approval. They have the available parking, so they meet the parking requirement, but I'm not sure that you need to assign it as part of the approval.
If, if everyone's all right with that, I, I'm okay, but I don't, I don't think that.
Actually, I wouldn't, I would recommend not, either because let's say that you had someone that was elderly or handicapped, and to force them to park off-site wouldn't make a hell of a difference.
What if they're in the night shift and they're overnight and they have to park off-site?
Yeah, that doesn't, and that's obviously the way the applicant has explained the shift patterns of these employees. That's not typically when there's going to be the 7 or 8 employees working there. So, but I don't think you want to specify, for the reasons we just outlined.
It'll self-regulate itself.
Okay, I'm all right with it not, but I thought that that's what it stated, so I thought it would be a good one to put in there. And then I, I don't know what to put about snow removal, clearly. And then I, I don't know what to put about snow removal, clearly. But it, maybe.
I'm putting in here that excess snow must be removed off-site, and is stipulated in exhibit A.
Okay.
Not to belabor the point, but if, if you read the snow removal guidelines closely, it says that they are not to stack any snow on any landscaping, or any adjacent property area, which means the only place they can put it is in the parking lot. And it says if it's in the parking lot, that's going to be an accumulation that impairs access to the property, which means they got to remove it. They've got no place to put it in this particular store, because of the nature of the size of So are you going, and then Rich with the? I think if they adhere to exhibit A snow removal guidelines, they have to remove the snow from the property at its earliest convenient point.
Well, it says under four, we'll begin plowing at the property as soon as the snow rise reaches a depth, depth of two inches regardless.
That's just a trigger for when they have to start plowing. We're, we're not concerned about the removal of the snow as it falls and hits the ground. We're worried about the long-term storage snow.
Mm-hmm.
And in this case, there's no place to put long-term storage snow under this guideline, therefore it's going to have to be removed.
No matter what.
Right, because what they do ordinarily, it looks like they plow it to the end of the parking lot, and if they plow it to the end of the parking lot here, it's going to impair parking or flow of traffic.
Again, you're right, because it says in seven, all snow shall be plowed away from the building and pushed to the farthest end of the parking lot, and no snow shall be piled up, blah, 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 snacked, or stacked against light posts or onto islands or landscapes.
And with as few parking spots as they have, as soon as they start impairing a parking spot, the manager of the store is going to be on the phone to the snow removal guy, so.
And not every snowplow is just a pickup truck with a blade. I mean, there are loader type that come in, do their job, and drive away, and put it in the back of a truck. All right, so we have no pylon sign is allowed, elimination of the lower DD cup signs, decals on east, west elevation, addition of steel guardrail on the north property line completion, Monroe County DOH traffic agreements, and excess snow must be removed off-site, and as per provided exhibit A snow removal guidelines. Anything else? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'm prepared to go through the chain of letter.
Yes. So applicant will provide a letter documenting.
Ashley. Yeah, so you're looking for, it's that if it, it all damages the existing retaining wall, that it will make any necessary repairs. So that, that would be a letter as between the two property owners, and we're just asking, I guess the town just wants to see a copy of that, right?
We want to have one, yeah. So stating that any damage.
So damage caused the existing retaining wall.
To the retaining wall.
On the neighboring property.
Caused by the neighboring property, right?
Caused by Dunkin'.
Right, caused by the applicant.
Dunkin' Donuts operations. Will be repaired at Dunkin'.
At their cost, right.
Donuts expense.
Mm-hmm.
Good question, and I don't know if we addressed this or not, and I don't mean to be redundant. Mr. Giltner brought up a good point, again, to belabor snow removal. If a plow came in and threw it over on his property and he lost spaces, can we?
We put a guardrail in that's going to make it even more difficult.
That's going to stop.
I'm just asking, because if he loses spaces, it's, it's a.
Yeah, and he, you can't.
It's an encumbrance on his property.
He couldn't do that, so that would be, that would be a, a private landowner issue just the same as if your neighbor did it to you. I mean, you, you would be able to.
How we keep lawyers busy.
You, you, yeah, you'd, you'd call the cops. So, yeah, that's not really a town and code enforcement type issue, it's more of it, it, it is just a, a private landowner dispute.
If it hails and the hail happens to be plowed off-site, or?
Oh, the hail with it.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking to address Mr. Giltner's concern.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's prudent to do so. You know, and I, I don't mean to be redundant, but.
I mean, any site could have potential to plow snow off of their site into the neighboring site, I mean.
Right. And again, yeah, it wouldn't be a town code enforcement issue as much as it would be a, a private landowner dispute issue.
Again, I, again, I'm just trying to answer a resident's concern. You know, that's all. And I think it's prudent that he asked, and prudent that we answer.
So we want to add a stipulation that no snow?
It's ridiculous. I don't care if you add it or not. I don't think you need to add it.
No, I, I do not want that in there. I don't think that's necessary, I don't think it's within our purview.
Asking the question.
And I even question whether, other than the fact that it was offered by Mr. Romeo, I don't think we need to put in there that if they do damage to the wall, that it's.
I don't like the retaining wall one either, but.
I, I, I mean, let the civil justice system handle itself. He can document what the wall looks like now, and, and the condition, and if there's a problem, he'll address it with Mr. Romeo.
Yeah, that, that again, wouldn't be a town code enforcement issue. I think the question was just whether they wanted to see evidence of the existence of that sort of promise to fix it, but, right, if there were an issue, it wouldn't be for the town to deal with.
I mean, I think that the agreement that he's willing to write is nothing different than a civil court would determine, that if it was their responsibility, they would fix it at this point.
Makes it a little more comforting for Mr. Giltner.
I'm just trying to answer a resident's concern.
I, I'm just saying, I think it makes more comfortable for him. He asked for it, it's not unreasonable that we could have complied, and it, whether it does or does not have any impact on the town or not, and they don't enter into that dispute at all, it's still, he's going to have the comfort of having a letter that says that Mr. Romeo will fix.
It's a good thing. Again, I just asked the question.
Can't that be just be handled between the two parties?
Well, it's going to be.
Not us.
We just get a contract.
I mean, if you're asking, can we eliminate this with discussion, yes, we could eliminate it.
Okay. Does anybody feel it has to be in there?
I like it in there.
You mean the letter, Michael?
The letter.
Yeah, I like the letter in there, absolutely.
Bernie, letter?
I don't think it hurts.
Mary, no letter?
I'm going to say no.
I say no letter. Jay?
Um, I, I, it, it just, it seems like you're dotting the eye twice doing with a letter. I mean, it, 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 this, this.
So you're saying no letter, so now we got three no letters, three yes letters. Does anyone want to acquiesce?
That's what you get all the bucks for, make the decision.
I'll go with the letter.
Letter? All right, so we're keeping the letter in. All right, so now we have all the stipulations, with the exception of Mr. McDonald's concern about the snow at this point, and the applicant, the neighbor's concern. I think that snow, or grass clippings, or leaves, or all those things aren't part of.
I'm not going to have grass and leaf clippings on pavement, but again, I was just trying, Mr. Chairman, to address.
You will have leaves, there's landscaping, but they blow from all over. Any rate.
Exactly, so.
So do we have?
Just trying to address.
We heard, yep.
Concern.
So do we have a motion from anyone willing to make a motion?
Do you want me to make the motion?
Sure.
Sure. Upon the matter of PB 1502-2, upon the matter of request by Romeo Land Limited for, I guess this would be final site plan approval, or?
Preliminary and final.
Preliminary and final site plan approval, to demolish existing building and construct a new 1,572 square foot Dunkin' Donuts with drive-through and related parking, signage, landscaping, and other site-related improvements on premises 1220 East Ridge Road in a C business district, along with the other stipulations.
Wait, 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 let me throw something in. Don't we have to have town board approval for the amount of parking? Isn't that what was said originally?
It's already, we already have that. That's already something that has no purview, doesn't have to come before the planning board.
It's already been done?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't come to the planning board for approval.
No, no, but I mean.
It just has to be subject to town.
Subject to, subject to town board approval.
The agreement, yeah, it's in the code, I mean, that's the town code.
Okay, all right, okay. Because somebody said that earlier, I just want to make sure. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those not in favor say nay.
Nay.
That was one. Just Mary, right?
I did.
Donald.
Palermo.
Palermo, what did I say, Palermo?
Well, you have it. He's Mr. Second.
Oh, so we have six to one. Decup yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for investing in Rondicoy.
You gave up too easy.
PB 1411-2, upon the matter of request by Carols Corporation for revised site plan and signage approval, to remove one drive-through lane, relocate, relocate the ADA parking, install six-foot-high privacy fence and signage on premises 625 East Ridge Road Burger King Restaurant in a C business district.
Welcome.
My name is Robert Storey, I'm construction manager for the Carols Corporation. We're here to remove one drive-through lane, and we're not relocating the ADA, we're going to keep it in the same spot and make it meet ADA code, it doesn't meet today, and then add a six-foot-high fence.
All right, well, Jay's not here. We'll go to Bernie. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so you, at the workshop, were you at the workshop?
Yes.
Okay, so the only change is a fence, or was that brought up at the workshop?
Well, we were, before, we came to, I came to the workshop once before, and we were going to relocate the ADA parking. You suggested that we didn't, because where we were going to locate it was not a good location. So I went back and looked at it, and we kept the ADA where it's at, and we just got to lower the parking lot to make it meet the 2% it needs to be.
Yeah, there was a great issue, initially you wanted to keep the parking out on the north side of the property.
Yes.
Relocated to the north from the east.
From the east, yeah.
And we felt that there was an adverse condition.
Problem with backing out into traffic and stuff, and it made sense, a lot of sense, so that's why we decided to go, or I decided to leave it where it is, and just try to change the grade on the parking.
I have, I have no questions.
And you're actually adding more lawn areas, so.
Yes.
Mary?
No, I was glad to see that you did stay with what you had. Otherwise, it's good.
Michael?
No questions, here.
Ray?
No questions.
Rich?
My only concern was an offense, not having it go all the way to the ground, so that things won't get gathered underneath it, and we addressed that previously.
Mm-hmm.
No further questions.
Jay?
I'm good, thank you.
This time I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so. Seeing none, close public input. We have to complete seeker for this, of which we have the short form environmental assessment in front of us. There is no issues that present any moderate to large impact as it relates to the environmental assessment form. The, is not any issue?
No, there are no adverse environmental impacts associated with this action, we're recommending a negative declaration.
Does anyone from the board have any questions, concerns, or comments on the seeker? Does someone want to make a motion to pass, approve the seeker determination?
I'll make the motion to approve seeker as an unlisted action, negative declaration.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Someone want to make?
I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, for approval of PB 1411-2, upon the matter of request by Carols Corporation for revised site plan and signage removal, to remove one drive-through lane, relocate ADA parking, install six-foot-high privacy fencing and signage on premises 625 East Ridge Road Burger King Restaurant in a C commercial, business, excuse me, a C business district with, as Rich said, how high did you want the offense to be?
Whatever's in the plans.
Okay. According to the plan, I move for approval.
Well.
Second?
Pete, they didn't relocate the, the ADA as it's stating here. They left it where it was.
You're correct.
Well, technically, it is vertically being relocated.
We can change that word to modified ADA parking?
Technically, it's not in the same place, so it is relocated. So I'm changing this, the condition is modify handicap parking, not relocate. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you for investing in Rondicoy.
Had it passed, huh? Doesn't think that's as done here.
Thank you.
Hmm?
Jay might want to clarify that. I don't see it on the original plan, the old plans.
Next matter before the board.
PB 1504-3, upon the matter of request by David Chappis for Coastal erosion area protection district permit, EPod, to demolish existing deck and construct a new two-story deck on premises 4925 Culver Road in an R1 residential district.
I'm David Chappis, this is Matthew Purdue, we live at 4925 Culver Road. This is slightly incorrect, because it is not to demolish an existing deck. The existing deck has been demolished, we received DEC approval to demolish the deck in the fall. We did not have to get approval from the Town of Rondicoy to demolish the deck. I worked with Carrie on that at the time. So, I mean, really, that, that's it. We went through DEC approval, it was a lengthy process. The deck that we're proposing to build extends no further north than the previous deck that has been there probably 60 years. That, that's really it.
Any questions from the board?
I have two questions, Mr. Chairman. It, it says in the, in the environmental impact, or the environment assessment form, that it's, that you're replacing, the replacement deck is the same footprint as the existing deck, but it looks like.
It's not, it's larger.
Yeah, it looks like there's a wraparound on the side that wasn't there before.
There is, it extends slightly further east as well. It goes, it's about two foot, eight inches further to the east, and then there's a wraparound on the west. And then there's a wraparound on the west side to encompass this very awkward jut out of our foundation. I think at one point, because of where the water used to be, there's like concrete underneath there and there's like some concrete steps. It's all been covered over by sand. And for some reason, there's a jut out of our foundation there. So we wanted to incorporate that so that, you know, when you come down from the side of the house, you would step up there to get to the deck as opposed to walking into our neighbor's property. It's very tight. It's a very tight space. The existing, the new deck is about 25%... The first level is 25% larger area than the previous deck. That's as much as the DEC would allow us to go.
And the second deck's the same, the second floor is the same size?
No, it's significantly smaller. The first level goes out 12 feet. Second level goes out three feet at one section and then it goes out, there's like a 10-foot-by-8-foot section on the side. So no part of the second deck goes out as far as the first. Our height of our ceilings are very low in our house. To do that would create a tunnel effect, which would eliminate any sunlight we get in our house.
And there's no stairs on the south end of the additional 13 by three or so?
There is. It's not drawn, that total length includes two, it would be two steps up. That total, that total span on the, on the east side of the house that you're talking about?
This is, this is all at the same level as the other deck on the first floor?
Yes.
And this, the, the side easement meets code for the deck?
It does not. We have area variance in now. We believed at the time that it did. We received some incorrect information from the town. We used that the entire time going through the DEC process. We thought we had a side setback of 10%. It should have read 10% with a minimum of five feet. That was not in the requirements. We didn't know that. And so that's the process that went through. So now we have to go through an area variance as well for the zoning, which is next month. Or next week, actually, yeah.
And what's the adjacent property, what's the, what's the setback of the adjacent, the existing adjacent property?
Like how close her house is to the property line?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry. I mean, it's, it's probably five or six feet from the, from the lot line, if I'm guessing. Which is close. They're all very close in this area.
Yeah, I, I understand. Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about adding, you know, making something that's already very close closer by adding the deck there, so I don't know. I, you're going to have to get permission from the zoning board, I assume anyway, right? You're just going to have to go through the zoning board. That's really more of a question for them, I think, than us, but...
If it was a sidewalk, it would be permitted without a variance, but being that it's a deck, a variance is required?
Yeah, because of the, if it was a paved area, you can go two feet within the property line. But this is because it's a deck structure, they need to, it's based on the state building code, is the five-foot minimum.
Thank you.
Rich?
I would, I don't have any questions, but I just mechanically, looking at part three of the seeker form, the last paragraph, I would propose we change it to this first floor footprint is 25, approximately 25% larger than the previous deck. Just so that this is accurate.
Okay.
But other than that, I have no questions or concerns.
So you're saying where it says this foot?
It currently says this footprint is consistent with the previous deck. I think we need to say the first floor footprint is 25% larger than the previous deck.
Just as a point of clarification, I was, the, that reference to the being consistent was with the extension from the, from the edge of the house out toward the lake. The prior footprint didn't go any further than 12 feet and this one doesn't either. So in terms of looking at the environmental impact with respect to the coastal erosion hazard zone, which is looking at the distance to the water, that's...
I see.
So I apologize for...
The lower deck goes the same distance that the old one did, which was an upper deck?
No.
No, it goes the same distance out, but it goes off to the west.
It's wider than it was.
Goes to the east further than it did, so it's not the same footprint per se. It's...
Same depth.
It's the same depth or...
The depth is consistent is, would be a better characterization.
Okay, so, so maybe we should just change it to this depth is consistent with the previous deck?
That's accurate?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rich?
No.
Ray?
No questions.
Michael?
I'm, I'm fine. No questions.
Mary?
No questions.
No questions.
This time I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rio Alderman. I live at 4929 Culver Road and I'm in the house right next door. I just put some, I'm really bad with blueprints.
Thank you.
So I thought I would do some visual renderings of what I'm going to be looking at. So, just to clarify, first of all, the, the second story deck was not on that house beforehand. So, we're going from the lower deck, which was there before, to a new deck that will be 25% bigger and then adding on a second-story deck. I don't know much about town code, so I can't even profess to talk about that. But the, the master plan, when I read through that, it talks about encouraging and preserving the character, scale, mass of original houses. And it also talks about, you know, the character of the neighborhood. And if you look at the size of this deck, nobody there in that area has something this large. And then the second-story decks that they have are nowhere near as large as they're proposing, or at least in the configuration. So I guess I'm just asking the town board to, to look at it and consider the scale of it and the size of it and see if it really fits what the neighborhood looks at. But really, my main concern is the upper deck. The way that they've designed it is absolutely fantastic. When they walk into their house, they're going to have beautiful sightlines to the lake. When they walk out, they're going to have sun on their faces all day. When they look to the west, they're going to have beautiful views of the sunset. Unfortunately for us, it does the exact opposite. And, and we did this 10 years ago. We were here with the town board, with the DEC, with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we put out an addition in a deck on our house. And so I know how hard this process is. But we did it to maximize the views from our house, including the flow from our kitchen out looking west. And now if you look at some of these pictures, what I'm going to see is I'm going to have to look through their deck from my living room, from my kitchen, to, to look at the west. And I don't think that, and honestly, Matt and David have never once come to any of the neighbors and discussed what they were proposing. This is the first time that I've had an opportunity to voice my opinion about this project. And, and I just don't think that it's fitting the neighborhood, but it's really not fair. And again, looking at the master plan, you know, it says decks should respect the sightlines of neighboring buildings. This does not respect our sightlines and we were never consulted about it. So I guess what I would like from the town, the board, is to at least table this for right now and discuss it. And, you know, the, do both decks match the size and scale of the neighborhood? And is there any way that the upper deck could not be as intrusive of our sightlines? And, and I hate people that show up without any sort of solution. If they want 114-square-foot deck on their upper deck, put it in front of your house. By putting it over there, my son's room is right there. All the noise that's generated from there is going to be going into his room. Put it in front of your house. I'm not asking anything different and I've enclosed pictures of other decks in the neighborhood. And, and everybody is very respectful of where their decks go and how big they are. And, and this does not do that. And, and I guess I would also like to know that there is, had been a survey done. And when they actually do build this, I would like it to be done right and on their property. And this, as we've just heard from you, there's, the setbacks are so tight and the lot lines are so tight that to slap a 25-foot-wide deck on a 35-foot lot, it better be in the right spot. And lastly, they're, they're going for a zoning appeal. If we're going to hold off on this, I'd like to at least hold off on that and make sure that everything's dotted and crossed here before they go there and then go get a variance. But I don't think that, I don't know where you are on this. But, you know, this is the first time I've had a chance to speak and voice my opinion. And I'd really like you guys to take a minute and, and make sure that this is done right. Because it's not characteristic of the neighborhood. And honestly, I'll be back in a couple of weeks because I'd love a bigger deck. So... Any questions for me?
What, this view with the sunset with the three-season room, is this speculation?
It's speculation that, that if they are allowed to do this, what's to prevent the next neighbor or them to, to do that? You know, I don't know if it's possible, but I know that once the floodgates are open, anything's possible.
I hear you correctly that you don't have any problem with a second-floor deck as long as it's
Nope.
in line with their house?
Not at all.
With the outline of their house?
Not at all.
Okay.
I think it'd be fantastic. And if they want 114-square-foot deck up there, knock yourself out. But I just don't think it should be in front of my house.
Okay.
So your main objection really is that jutting out to the east toward your home?
Absolutely. It's going to ruin the sightlines from our house.
If they, if they chopped it off at the end of the house, you're comfy?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions of this neighbor from the board?
How long have you lived there?
16 years. Loved Rondicote, never moved it. Love my, love my house. And that's why we put the addition on, so we could stay. We have my 89-year-old father-in-law lives with us. World War II veteran, needed a place to go, thought, you know, why not live with us and the kids? So, you know, he has a great place to live and we love where we live, so we're never moving. Just don't tax us out.
And when you put your addition on, did you speak to the neighbors?
I'm sorry?
When you put your addition on, did you speak to the neighbors?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Our neighbors are here, yeah.
Okay. Anything else of this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. In the matter of David and Matt's addition. My name is Mary Reevely and I live at 4921 Culver Road on the west side of David and Matt. In full disclosure, I must admit that I am related to the tall, handsome man who just spoke to you. He's my son. Obviously, David and Matt are surrounded by our family on both sides. Between our houses, theirs is a very small house, formerly occupied by a widow for many years who kept it in terrific order. Unfortunately, when she moved out, it became a rental property with horrible tenants who did nothing but abuse the place. When it was sold to David and Matt, they were a most welcome addition. Since they have moved in, they have done everything to improve their property and they've done a great job. The unique thing about where we all live is the joy of living on the beach, although not necessarily this last winter. In the summer, the sunsets are simply glorious. And each evening, you will find people gathered at marches to view the end of the day. And many of our neighbors are out on their decks to watch the sun sink slowly into the west. To date, many of the existing decks are primarily one-story. Those that are two-stories are not terribly wide and do not impede their neighbor's view of the all-too-infrequent Rochester sun. My major concern with David and Matt's plans for their new deck is the proximity of our houses. We are each on 34-feet, 35-foot-wide lots. And between the houses, my grandson and I went out and measured this afternoon and just took a tape from my house to their house. And an unscientific measurement says that it's 11-foot-six inches, literally between the edge of, the side of their house and the side of my house, of the, yeah. The dictum of good neighbors make, good fences make good neighbors was not true in our case. We had an old fence that was a rusted chain-link deal between our two houses. And with my permission, David and Matt took it down. And I only mention this because I'm giving, I only have one copy, but I will give it to you and you can pass around, of the difference, the distance between our two houses, which you will see is very small. Anyhow, the fence came down and now between our houses on the parking lot side, we have beautiful gardens, I think, that abut each other. So they have, they are great neighbors. As I understand their plans, their new deck would come over three feet beyond their house towards my side on their first level. Their former deck's first level towards the beach was flush on my, flush with their house on my side. In other words, the house came out and the deck went straight out. And that's what I would request, that their new deck maintain the old configuration of the house is here and the deck goes straight out flush from the house. Do you understand what I'm saying, that it doesn't go willy-nilly on the side? Their plan appears to have a large second-story deck that would frankly loom over my current deck. I can understand their wishes for a second-story deck, but would ask that it also be flush with the sides of their house. And I gather in their plans, which I haven't really seen, that it would, the second story would not be anywhere near as deep as the first story. So they're great neighbors. I think I would like to have them have what they want. I understand my son Rio's concerned because on the plans he showed me, it does loom towards his house. You know, I think the other thing is that their house is probably one of the smallest houses. I'm not sure. I think maybe 800 square feet? 950? And I gather the deck is large in proportion to the size of their house. I don't know if anybody from the town has had to come out and look at what the distance is between our two homes. But 11-foot-six inches is not a heck of a lot. So if you're coming, say, three feet towards my, my house, you know, our decks are really going to be cheek-to-jowl, belly-to-belly, nose-to-nose, whatever. So anyhow, I will submit this one picture that I have of the, the distance between our houses. And the other thing is I, my tape location map, I've lived there since 2001. And on my tape location map, it says where the lot line is was from the edge of my house that I own six-foot-two inches. I don't know whether that's correct or not. Because through the years, we took down the chain-link fence that was between our houses. And so all that lies between our houses is sand. So it's very difficult to tell where the lot lines really are. And where the houses are placed in relationship to the beach, it looks like we're all looking straight out on the beach, but in truth, we're not. Our houses, the beach appears to be like this, but our houses really go like that. So where the lot lines are, I'm not really too sure. And if David and Matt have provided a tape location map, my guess is if you put mine and theirs, you can see where the lines really should be between the two houses. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening. So, and I don't know who I submit this to. Okay.
His tape location map says that the property line on the western side is 4.9, the house is 4.9 feet off the property line.
Okay.
And on the eastern side, the house is 9.1 feet off the property line.
Okay. So nine, 11, 12?
You're west of him, right?
I'm west of him.
And you said your property line was 6-point-something?
That's what the tape location map says as far as I can understand it.
Well, that would be 6 plus some, you had 6-point-something?
Right.
Plus 4.9, so almost 11 feet, so.
Right. As I said, my grandson and I measured it was 11.6. You know, give or take a half an inch or something like that. So, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
No.
And with my gray hair, I'm going to drive over the thing at Dunkin' Donuts.
Careful.
I think there's a date happening here, I don't know.
What timing.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me a couple of minutes. My name is Elena Alderman. I am Rio Alderman's wife and I bought the house back in 1999. I just want to reiterate a couple of things, that there's only 33 homes along that stretch of beach. And it's a very unique environment. It's a unique neighborhood with a lot of unique issues. The sand, the boats, et cetera. So I just, I just want to say that there's a lot of unwritten, unspoken rules that go down there that we just try, there's, because we're on the beach, there's no fences clearly, but there are lot lines. We try to be respectful of our neighbors. There's, we try to be respectful of our neighbors. Even before I got to know my neighbor to the right, we were very considerate about where we were gonna put things so that it did not block her view. I just wish that they would show the same consideration to us. I just hope that you consider their current proposal. I find it unrealistic and, and very imposing, and I hope that you take some time to look at that and, and keep it within the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And I just want to, again, stress that in the 2014 Comprehensive Master Plan, that to encourage development of appropriate design scale and use to improve the utilization of public lands and to improve residents' quality of life. And if this goes forward, it will definitely impact my quality of life, my father's quality of life, who is very thankful every day that he's sitting at the deck and watching the water and not in a nursing home. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion of this hearing. Well, maybe you want to address some of the neighbors' concerns?
Okay. Um, they're probably not entirely wrong. I mean, it, it's true. We have a small house. It, you know, it is just us. We are actually really good neighbors, despite the fact that we don't really speak with our neighbors, not necessarily by our choice. We are sandwiched between a family. I'm more than willing to come up with something different for the second story. The, the only reason the second story went like that is because the DEC would not allow me to go any further north. Every other deck extends significantly more than 12 feet out of their, from their house. Maybe not significantly, that, that's probably an exaggeration, but it does most go further than 12 feet. We do have a small house. Part of buying a small house was that we thought we would be able to compensate for that by having a nice deck. That's why we did the second level. I can see how that could affect their view to the west. That isn't our intention. However, every time the sun's out on the west, most of the neighbors put up a curtain or something to shield them anyway, so they don't even, they don't even look that direction. If, if we're gonna talk about noise, um, yes, it'll be, I guess it's noisy during construction. We're certainly not hard ears or people that have excess noise out on our, on our deck. We haven't in the last two and a half years that we've lived there. It's certainly no more noisy than a constantly running hot tub motor. But, or marges, for that matter. My view to the west is by Marges Tiki Bar, that I never had an opportunity to come to the planning board and talk about, and a giant enclosure that was put up all winter to protect it, that is significantly larger than a Tiki Bar. I don't care. I moved next to a bar. It was there before I moved there. They didn't move next to a two-story deck. I get that. So, if the board is not gonna allow us to do it, I would rather make a change right now with you guys than to have it carried over. I, I want my deck this summer. Our existing deck had to be taken down, or it was going to fall off our house and cause damage to my foundation. So, it was so rotten, so.
I believe that the issue they have is with the second-story deck.
Correct. And now, if, if you guys want to make a recommendation to, what you want me to do, your, your entry to the second-floor deck is through the sliding glass doors on the second floor, correct? That's correct. That's it. There's no stairs. It's not offset because you needed room for stairs or anything like that? No, it's purely offset because we wanted to have room to put a small table and chairs on it. We didn't want to extend more than three feet out in front of our sliding glass doors on the first floor because of the height of our... But if you, if you move the whole deck to the west, so it lined up with your west wall? Yep. And it lined up with your east wall, so it's directly in front of your house like almost all the others that are in these pictures here? Yeah, I didn't get to see the pictures, but I'm familiar with what the neighbor looks like. You're not gonna lose a lot of square footage. You may lose some workability, because now you have more in front of the doors, but it sounds like you could alleviate all of the concerns of your neighbor almost. Um, and solve the problem. I'm willing, if I can go two or three feet on either side of my second-story door and go out, say, five feet instead of three feet, I would be comfortable with that if my neighbors are comfortable with that. Here, here's my question. When you start altering the second floor, is that gonna create issues with DOT, or was DOT? No, DOT's, I could build... They're concerned about distance from the lake, right?
I think you meant DEC.
DEC, I'm sorry, thank you. There's no traffic, no. Um, DEC's only concern was the amount of sand that we're covering. Okay. And so that only relates to the first-level deck. They were totally fine with this. The second level could be the exact same size. That's not what we wanted to do.
I, I would like to see you modify that second deck as well as, as the first, so that it does fit in with the configuration of your home, so, so that it, it quote, "came straight out." I'm certain that you're gonna lose a little, but I don't think it really goes, this is a great deal of square foot.
No, I'm not gonna go out as, as far then. I mean, I was only going out three feet in front of the second slider. I would probably go, say, five feet out then, and then, I, I don't want my second level of my deck to go out as far as the first, because it just creates a tunnel looking out of our first floor.
If you had a 5-foot-deep by 10-foot-wide second-story deck, that would be acceptable.
That would be fine with us. We would modify it for that. And Mike, did I hear you say you want them to modify the first floor also, or not?
Well, the first floor, it, it also, looking at the picture...
And I agree, but I, I think if I'm, and it's hard because of the angles of these pictures, but it looks like at least one of the other properties down there, it looks like it's, the lower deck is wider than the footprint of the house.
Have you seen these?
I have not, no.
Can we give them a copy, so he knows?
Yeah, no, they're, they're right. I mean, next-door Mary's is wider than, than her house, too. I mean, that's, that's common. We just went wider on, because that, that's the side that we have more land. So it wa, it wasn't anything for Rio and Elena, it was just that that's the side we had more land. Uh, we were allowed to.
I'm not, I'm not married to the lower deck.
I don't know, you have such a symmetrical house, you may, it may look better with it coming straight out from your house.
Again, I'm, I'm fine with it. We, you guys can make, you can tell me I have to do that on the second level, that's fine.
What about the sidewalk portion?
I would really like to keep that, I, that piece of my foundation already juts out that close anyway. I'm, I'm not putting anything, there's already concrete under it, too. Um, I can't, DEC won't let me pour a new concrete walk up to there, because I have to remove like two feet of sand to get to the existing walk, and it, I mean, it, I didn't create it, it is what it is.
This is what you're talking about, right here? Yeah, right here. Right there? Yeah, there's steps next to it, too. Those steps are even closer to, I mean, my neighbor's property.
Those, half the, most of the time of the year, those are covered up in sand. I discovered them last year. You never know what you're gonna discover, I guess.
I mean, the bottom isn't always...
I think there's a, an evident compromise here.
So are we saying that we would be in agreement of a deck that aligns with the prop, of the sides of the, the building on the first level and a 5-by-10 on the second level?
Wait, wait, you're changing, I can't go to the side on, on the first level either?
I don't know, that's what you were saying.
No, I said I wasn't married to that, sorry.
I'm not, you know something? From, from the pictures we're seeing, it looks like there are other people who are beyond itself, Pete, with the deck. Little difficult to tell.
So we're saying leave the existing first-story deck as is, and the second-story deck would be a 5-by-10 centered on the house?
What I, what I was thinking is that it looks like their house is narrower than the previous house, and if we, they went to the same width as the previous house, then that would, that might be a compromise as well.
On the top?
On the, on the bottom.
Well, you know, the, the previous deck did jut out on the east side.
Yes, it did.
According to the existing tape location map, so, in reality, other than the additional width that you're adding to the west, which is really just bringing it over to the edge of the house, it's almost the same as what the existing...
It is increasing to the east. It, it is bigger than the previous deck. So the previous, at the, if you're looking at the pictures that they provided, at the top, the top one, that, where you see the stairs on the left side, it is, it is going over, I think, I believe it is 2-foot 8 inches further. But the stairs are not on that side. The new stairs are directly in the, in the center of our house, right off the slider.
But would you be amenable to having it the same, the same footprint or the same, actually the same footprint as the previous deck?
On the first floor. I want to say no. That was the, the largest argument I had with DEC, was, I couldn't go further north. So I, it, it's actually a very small deck. Yes, it's a small house, but it's a small deck. There's barely room to fit a table with six chairs around on it.
But how about, you want, I mean, right now, it extends beyond your existing house?
Correct. But on my property, but yes.
You wouldn't live with that line? You, you want to go beyond that line?
Ultimately, I want what I submitted, what was approved by DEC, what I've submitted to you guys, but I'm willing to concede on the second-story deck. If I have to concede on something on the first, I, I don't, I mean, obviously, I have to live with it, but...
Right now, the neighbors, I believe, if my understanding, they're test, they don't have any issue with the first-floor deck. So, I mean, for us to change anything with the first floor is nothing.
I thought they did have an issue with it. It comes out further than it did. I think...
They were concerned about view, sorry.
Not they were concerned about the second-floor deck, which was in line with the first-floor deck, which was...
Right, and I think they were concerned, Jay, with the passibility of a sunset room underneath.
That's not before us.
No, no, but that...
Let me just make sure I understand. Right now, this, this deck on the, on the first, the first floor is 22-wide by 12-deep.
Yes.
And you're talking about narrowing it from 22 to 19 or so, right? If it were the same as the previous footprint? And you're telling me you can't get a table with six chairs around a deck that's 19 by 12?
Yes, but I, and then...
Well, we would, I think we will, you're not gonna allow them to go to the edge of the building on that one, which, which would add, I, I don't know.
It's not the, it's not the edge of the building, it's the...
I know, but I'm saying if they kept the easternmost edge of the deck and increased the westernmost edge of the deck by two feet, it would increase that width to maybe 21 feet.
Oh, I, I don't think I can, I don't think I can change. I'll be really close to my lot line then, at the end of the deck. That's the reason why there's that corner angle cut, because our lot's angled.
Yeah.
So it gets real close there.
If you are going that far, except for the angle cut off the end of the deck.
Tell me what you want me to build. You can open up public comment again if you want, I don't really care. I just want to know what to build.
Let's reopen public input and let the neighbor speak. Do we have to have a motion?
I saw move.
All those in favor? Any opposed, say nay? Could you just maybe give us a little input, more clarification on the first-floor deck?
The, the first-floor deck, the, the original deck, they are going out another two, three feet, whatever it is. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with it, because everybody's so close together. But, you know, if that's something that, you know, if they need to concede, you know, I, we might concede on that. I mean, we've discussed it, and, you know, you're close enough that, you know, it's either you and I are holding hands, or you and I are holding hands. It's, you know, we're not talking that far. So, from that standpoint, you know, I, and one of my ideas was to, you know, why wouldn't they just bust out the west side? Because they already got that strip there, and then just go straight off of that, but it sounds like that's an impossibility.
Yeah, I think that that runs into the property line.
So, but that was my original thought, is, you know, if you got three feet on...
Consult your mom about that, or not?
What's that?
Did you consult your mom about that, or?
No, no, of course not.
Did he just get a little less handsome?
I get a woman when I get home, you know, but, um, no, so, you know, I mean, it, we're so close that it, it doesn't really make a difference. It's really the upper deck is my...
And you're okay with the 5-by-10 upper deck?
Um, I mean, I'd have to, but yeah, I mean, it sounds pretty reasonable. I mean, it's a lot smaller than they had it originally intended.
And, and I'm just out of curiosity, the 5-by-10, why don't we just stay with the east and west lines of the house, like all the other decks? Is there a reason we can't do that?
He said he didn't want it.
You start cutting off view.
I think it's a concession that they're trying to make, that bringing it back will allow greater view out of the neighbor's house.
Right, and we're, and we're doing that because we're cutting back significantly on the east side.
I mean, to me, I guess if the neighbor's accepting of it, I would accept the first-floor deck as they designed it. They have to get a variance for the sidewalk portion, and then the change that we would be, would be to the 5-by-10 deck on the second floor.
The only thing that I had considered of them building the upper deck, which is more of a building technicality, is, um, when you look at that south view, the bottom picture, your slider goes out, and it actually extends out maybe four feet from the house, and there's a little gambrel roof, and then, so they're gonna have to have a railing to protect them from falling onto the roof or falling off the deck. So it's almost gonna have to be enclosed on four sides, five sides. It's just a building thing that I, I don't know if that was a consideration of yours, but...
That's something the building inspector would review and make sure that is in accord, in accordance with New York State Building Code.
Yeah, I just think that the builder's gonna be annoyed.
Are they, are you attaching the, the deck to the, to the house on the second floor?
No. We're coming all the way up with, with 6-by-6 footers.
So how do you come up with a, you're gonna be able to come up with a 6-by-6, 6 with it only 10 feet wide? It's gonna be right next to the, what, where does that come down to?
I don't understand what you're asking.
On the, on the, on the, the house side, if you're gonna come down, if you've got a, if you've got this now that's 5 feet, 10-inch, or 10 feet by 5?
The house is only 10 feet wide.
Here.
The house is 16.6 feet wide.
Where does this go, and where does this go? Does it go straight down, or?
Straight down.
And, and does that block your?
No, because with the...
It'll be outside the...
Because the joist that I can fit them along, I can have more than a 6-foot span between them, by building code. So the posts will go on either side of the slider.
And it's gonna, it's gonna go down to the, to the, to the deck, or it's going down to the?
All the way down to their own footers. They're 18, they need to be 18-foot long, 6-by-6 posts. I have to special order them from the 84 lumber.
Okay.
David? Is this a deck covering the sidewalk? Is that what that is?
It's a walkway, but, I mean, there's not gonna be anything on it, but there has to be a railing because of the height.
It's a deck.
It is a deck, yeah. That's why it's in the proposal.
But there's no steps that go down?
There is. That last one should have two lines drawn on it. It's that, it is that, that total distance. Yeah.
I'd still like to see it go out straight on each side. That's it.
Well... Any other public comment?
I guess I would acquiesce to the neighbor on the east. If they...
If they want a balcony?
Well, I mean, if you want the, if you don't care about the bump out on the first floor, because it's on your pro, adjacent to your property, then I would defer...
I just want to make sure it goes where it's supposed to go.
Right. And then, she, you can influence stuff on the west side at this point, right? Right. And then she, you can influence stuff on the west side at this point, right? I mean, it's the direct neighbor. I mean, I, I didn't, you know.
I mean, I, if, if I were, I, I don't know if this, if this possible because of the, there's other issues with it, but if you just did pavers along there, along the, um.
They won't allow impervious materials.
I can't get around the jut out. The foundation piece that sticks out of my house.
Yeah.
I'm not building it all the way down the whole side of my house. I'm only building, which is what I want. I would love to have it all the way down the side of my house, so I step off my sidewalk.
Wait, I'm sorry, just have you come to the microphone.
What I wanted to build was a boardwalk, basically, that went down the side of my house, so I would step off my sidewalk in the south side, and walk down a boardwalk onto the deck. So, you know, when my, you know, eighty-year-old grandmother comes over, I don't have to carry her through the sand to get her onto the deck. So, that was what I wanted. The DEC wouldn't allow that. So, they allowed me to go up to the concrete point of, that sticks out of my house, because in order to, to do that, in order to have access from, on ground level, in order to have access on ground level to the north side of my house, um, the way that the house is configured now, I, 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 I have to walk on my neighbor's property, technically. I mean, we don't have a fence there or anything. It's all just sand. It all blends together. But, so that's what, that, that's why I designed it. That's, that's what the intention was. And if that's gonna stop all of this, I'll remove that too. I, I wanna build a deck. I wanna build it on Memorial Day weekend. So, I'll remove it. I can come back again later.
And Rayo and Elena, since public input, input is still open, you are okay with the first floor deck as proposed with that portion that extends towards your property?
I'm not crazy about it, but I, I would concede, I, they, they needed to have a deck. I'm not against them having a deck. It's just, I don't like how it kinda cantilevers itself and the orientation is towards my desk, that's all. But, you know, if they would pull back the top deck to make it more balcony,
And I will.
then I would be okay.
I think we have a nice compromise being, really.
And he's saying he'll eliminate the three-foot piece.
Okay, so if you want me to eliminate the three, three-foot piece, then I might as well eliminate six inches on their side, and I don't have to go to zoning anymore.
Right.
I'll pull back so I'm right at five foot on their side, so it's shorter for them. I, I'm less close to them. And if I'm getting rid of the side on Mary's, then I can start my deck next week, because you can go ahead and approve this. They can stamp the drawings, and I can go. I mean, if I'm gonna compromise, what's six more inches, or whatever? I don't have to come in very much on the one side.
So, you're saying on the?
On the east side, I'm just under five, I'm just under five feet, I think.
Okay.
Correct? About how much is that? Do you know?
Yeah, well, I need to sort of, I have to follow the question.
I don't have the application. Do you have it?
Yeah.
And the comment about it being built right, it will be built right. I'm, I don't do shoddy work. I'm not in the business of that.
So, I guess the, what we would say is then we would approve it subject to the, the deck being only, the, the, the deck fitting, um, so that, such that it, it doesn't require a.
Area variance.
And on the second floor, it would be ten feet wide and five feet towards the, the lake.
Here's double checking, but I think you gotta get the fi, if you get to five feet, you don't need the variance.
Correct. If I get to five feet, I don't need the variance.
Right.
Yeah.
You just gotta get to, I mean, you have to redraw it a little bit anyway.
Well, I can just get there.
Well, and then.
We don't need to tell me what it is right now. I'll, I'll revise it.
Yeah.
Do I get my fifty dollars back? Probably not, right?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Oh, for real?
So, win-win.
Yeah.
And, and you got happy name.
Dinner on me. Not for you guys. Just for him.
Well, the answer's though, you gotta get the five feet on either side.
And then the other side, the, uh, east side, you don't need, uh, that, that side's already within five feet, or, or more than, you don't have to go.
Correct.
All right.
Sounds like a very reasonable.
We're gonna close public input again. Public input's closed. All right. I think we have.
Is this an unlisted action, Mr. Chairman?
We have to do seeker.
Let me just do seeker.
I don't need to say in here anymore, right?
Nope. You're excused. Thank you very much.
Uh, matter of PB fifteen oh four dash three, with respect to seeker, I move, uh, unlisted action, negative declaration.
I'll second.
Sorry, I'm a little behind here. Who seconded?
Plukas.
Plukas. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay?
You want me to give this a shot, or what?
Sure.
Uh, matter of request of, hi, David Chapius, for, is it Chapius, or Chap? Chapius? For coastal erosion area protection district permit, uh, to demolish existing deck and construct, or actually is to, yeah, to demolish existing deck and construct new two-story deck on premises forty-nine, twenty-five Culver Road in R-one residential district, I move approval subject to the following changes. Number one, the existing deck is already demolished, so that doesn't need to be there. Number two, um, the second store, floor deck, uh, dimensions to be, uh, ten feet wide by five feet deep, with the five-foot direction being towards the lake. Um, and the third provision is to, um, narrow the west side of the first floor deck such that it stays five feet or greater from the west property line.
And we're eliminating the three-foot wide.
That will.
You need to say the same thing to the east side, then.
Right.
You can say five feet from the property line on the east side as well.
Can we, number four? Well, can we say it can, needs to be reduced in size as required to allow no, create no variances?
Yes.
To eliminate the need for an area variance.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay?
Okay. And that, those new plans will be reviewed by?
They'll be submitted for, um, building permit, at, for building permit re, review by, um, our building inspector.
All right.
And I guess I would like to thank and commend both of the neighbors here to come to an equitable agreement. Very often, this is very contentious, no one wanting to give anything, and uh, we understand you didn't hear in advance, but I appreciate that everyone is willing to work together, and hopefully this is, will be successful. I understand.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? PB fifteen oh four dash four, upon the matter of request by Lantec, acting as agent for AS Washington LLC for preliminary and final site plan approval, to construct two mini storage buildings, a six-foot high board-on-board fence, and related improvements on premises six seventy, Washington Avenue, and in R-one residential district.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's John Sharaba. I'm with Lantec. And this evening, I'm representing AS Washington LLC. Uh, the owner, Mr. Craig Armitage, is here this evening. You can answer any questions that I cannot. Uh, you may remember this, uh, application. A long time ago, three years ago, we came to this board asking for a referral to the zoning board. At that time, we were asking for, uh, a reference to the zoning board, because we, we wanted to get a, a use variance for the mini storage project. Uh, at that time, I'm just gonna read a quick note that you said, that the planning board looks highly favorable upon this applicant. The applicant has proven to provide quality projects and business endeavors in the neighborhood. As I mentioned, Mr. Armitage is here. He owns CM Armitage Electrical Contractor. It's located at seven twenty-three Washington Avenue. Uh, this board approved his project probably four years ago, and if you've been down there, you've seen his building. And I think Craig is in the process of redeveloping that area. Um, town of Roanoke, uh, West Roanoke School District actually is following his color scheme. They recently painted their building to match Craig's building, so I think, I think, uh, the variance that we got, and hopefully the approval that we're looking for this evening, uh, we'll speak to that, and, and, uh, that's what we're, we're going for. The project itself is located at six seventy, Washington, which is on the east side of Washington Avenue, approximately three hundred feet north of Lake Shore Boulevard. The site is Zoned R-one. It's about three-quarters of an acre in size. Uh, there's an existing house on the lot, and our proposal is to construct two mini storage buildings. These buildings will be ninety feet long, forty feet wide, and have several units within them. The property will be screened with a six-foot board-on-board fence around the entire property. Uh, very consistent with our neighbor to the east, who has built a, a really nice fence, and we intend to keep that, uh, the same. Past comments were asked about the fencing and how far we'll extend it. We're gonna extend it down our, our south property line, um, to the front of our house that's there. The house I men, that I mentioned, it is a rental property. It's been rented, uh, since, uh, it was purchased. Um, one of the rough parts about the house is it looks kinda rough from the outside. The inside's been totally redone, but the plan and part of the project, uh, is to wrap the house with vinyl, uh, consistent with the mini storage units that we're going. So, it's part of the mini storage project is to upgrade the exterior of this property, of the house. Uh, we propose to have a separate entrance located along the north property line. Uh, the north property line is adjacent to the CSX Railroad property, which is an abandoned property, uh, not used by CSX at all. Actually, CXX last fall took out the bridge, uh, adjacent to this property. Uh, grading on this is generally flat. The land slopes to the north towards CSX property, so any stormwater runoff will go that way, will migrate to the north. This project is less than an acre disturbance, so we're under, not under any DEC threshold to do any stormwater management. Um, but our grading plan does show it going to the north. We looked at lighting. Uh, lighting this property is very, we're not really lighting the property. We're having emergency lighting, so motion detected lighting that'll go on, uh, after hours if, if the light is triggered. Lights will come on if, if there's vandals or someone trying to burglarize. It, so it's just a motion light. We have six of those. They're box lights mounted to the, to the building itself. So, we really wanna fit into the character of the neighborhood. We're not looking to be obtrusive. Um, gonna keep it well screened. And, um, the other element of this project too is that we're gonna leave the parking lot gravel to help with stormwater, so it doesn't, uh, migrate off the property, so it goes directly into the ground. Kinda went quickly, uh, over this application. I know you've seen it before. I know we went to the workshop. I try to keep my comments, uh, short, and I can address any questions you have at this time.
Jay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of quick questions, Mr. Sharaba. Um, first one is you, the, the forty by ninety buildings are just gonna be on a slab?
Yes.
And, um, what's the, I, I'm trying to find, maybe it's in here somewhere. I don't, don't see it. What's the height of the?
I believe it's sixteen feet to the peak.
Sixteen to the peak, but what about the, along the edges here?
Nine feet. I think it's an eight-foot door with nine, nine and a half foot at the eve.
Okay. All right, good. And then, um, with respect to the lights, uh, do you, um, is there a way you can do a, a photometric?
They're, they're on the plan. Uh, if you go to, I don't know what sheet it is, but we do have light contours on the, uh, full-size plans provided. So, showing the light spill.
Oh, I didn't see those.
Yeah, they're very faint.
Sorry.
Yeah.
First page, it was kind of, oh. I believe that's what that is.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's it.
Thank you.
Rich?
You, you didn't mention it, but it's my understanding, uh, you told us at the workshop, since we met a couple of years ago, there was also two blighted properties that were a recurring problem for the police and neighbors. You, you removed those as well.
Correct, yeah. It's, they were, uh, quite in disrepair, so those were removed, uh, about two years ago. They were raised and, uh, cleaned up. All that debris was, was carted off.
Ray?
Hey, Mr. Travis, since you brought this forth, I thought you did a great job the last time. I think that's just complete that.
Right.
I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Michael?
Nice project. That's good. It's good.
Mary?
I'm good.
Bernie's, looks good.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time.
Hi, Sean Rafferty at five seven zero Lake Shore Boulevard. Um, you guys seem to love this project, but I'd like to express my objections to it. Uh, I, I guess I haven't seen a scale drawing before of this thing, but this is a, it's a behemoth. Uh, my house is located.
Right here?
Yeah. And, uh, six-foot fence isn't going to block a, what was it, nine foot, eight to nine-foot sidewalls and a twelfth, sixteen-foot peak? And, uh, I haven't seen these light, light contours, but one of the very charming port, points of our backyard is that you need a flashlight to walk back there. And it provides just great, uh, stargazing opportunities back there. And, um, I understand they're gonna be motion detected, but there's also gonna be people living on that property, potentially setting off all these lights. Which brings me to another point, is who wants to live next to, or in the same lot as two storage buildings? What kind of, what kind of, um, tenants are we going to attract? It's another concern of mine. Um, traffic down Washington, it's, it does, I don't think it's, it would receive extra traffic very well. Um, there seems to be confusion, uh, when you're traveling, let's see, where would that be? Down towards St. Paul. If you're turning right on Washington, or are you turning right on St. Paul? People assume you're turning right on St. Paul, and they get right on your butt there if you're turning right on Washington. It's congested intersection as it is, and I don't think it would take any further traffic very well. Um, I don't know. It's, I just, I've taken aback by the scale of this thing.
Yeah, that's huge, and.
Maybe the colors are what's really helping.
What is phase two? Phase two is to get rid of the house and put up more storage units, and.
It would be a lot easier for them to get the required approval. I mean, this is, this is our neighborhood. This is our backyard.
Which is Zoned Residential R-one. I don't understand what this benefits a neighborhood. That's a business.
That's the, and the applicant did go for a use variance, um, so that would be when that would've come up. How long have you, just?
Fifteen years.
Okay. Just, that would, that's when the u, the use variance makes it, so this is, this isn't allowed use.
Okay, so we just came at the wrong time, is what you're saying?
I would never say you came, no, no, no.
I didn't say you came at the wrong time. It was a better opportunity.
But I just wanted to explain to you why that in a residential area, you would have this, you have to go get the.
But it does remain that we had a better opportunity to discuss this matter.
I wouldn't.
Well, the, the, the opportunity to discuss the use of that and a variance to the ordinance was at the time, that, unfortunately, at that time.
Yes, that's what I, I don't know where we.
I don't think we were notified. We didn't receive anything in the mail. In fact, you know, the notification that we just received, most of the people on Lake Shore didn't receive it.
Or in our area. We actually provided them copies, so I don't, maybe that's an issue. Well, regardless, uh, I just wanted to express my concerns. It looks like it's getting fast-tracked quite, quite well, so.
Yeah.
But they wanna be bashful.
It's a business. I understand that, but it doesn't do me any good. It decreases the value of our house.
And that, that Armitage building down the road does look great. I mean, it's a great-looking building, but when do you stop? It's gonna be Armitage Street, you know? It's just, where does this, where's it at?
And as far as the great neighbors, um, the police were just at your house the other night, because, um, they have two children, a four, a five-year-old and a two-year-old, and they were in the, um, um, in the street on, um. were in the, in the street on Lake Shore and St. Paul.
Yes. That's my concern. We've had tenant issues with that property. I mean, it's not our tenants, but we'd have to see them every day. I understand there's going to be a board-on-board fence, but...
Okay. Anyone from the board have any questions of the neighbors here?
Would any of you want this in your backyard?
It's not really something that we address, but I do say that as far as the use goes, and a variance to the R1 zoning ordinance for the use, it's right now that it's a permitted use for this property. So, we can't legislate against that at this point. It's not our board. It's not our purview. We can discuss the site planning issues and how they would relate to your property, and we're going to take your concerns into considerations after you're done speaking.
Historically, buildings like this have turned into meth labs and homeless shelters.
Well, I don't believe there's power inside the units to allow for meth labs.
Furthermore, the history of the two gentlemen sitting there, I, they're two of the most, have most integrity of business owners of the people you have in this town. You couldn't have better owners of it, so I would highly, highly doubt that that ever happening under their ownership.
So, I guess with the list of my concerns that remain in your purview, I guess would be the lighting, and I would like you to look in, maybe look over that a little more carefully. I'm no expert, but I don't want any more...
Because I understand that they're what they call high cutoff fixtures, which direct light to the ground in their motion sense, so only at night, if there's someone that comes in, would the lights turn on, you know? So, I think in general, the six-foot-high fence, you know, board-on-board, would, the light shines to the ground, would cut off any, you know... Where are you mounting those lights? I got to open up the drawing. Are they, is it on the sidewalls or on the peak?
Behind sidewalls facing east-west.
So, the lights are all mounted below the nine-foot level, so not at the peak, so it wouldn't be technically, you know, it would be very difficult to see with an angular view, the actual light fixture from your property. And what are, do you have hours of operation there? Well, at this point, I don't know. We can have a dialogue with you, but I have to, I mean, you have hours of, somebody couldn't go in at 2:00 in the morning, can they? So, it's got a pass lock that only would work during certain hours?
Yes, yep. I would give you the hours, but I have to look at the use variance, but we're going to be in line with what we receive. It's on the operation.
Right.
So, I'm not concerned with the eight-foot lights. I'm concerned with the ones at the top near the ridge.
I think that's just a representation of a typical building, not the actual building. The lighting, the plans show the actual lighting location, which is contrary to what you see on a tall...
Okay. All right, just, again, the only, I think, remaining issue I have that you can even address possibly is lighting, and you have the information there, so please consider it.
John, can I ask you a question? Isn't there already a large streetlight over by the Argini facility that glows over in there? So...
If there is, it does not illuminate my backyard, or I would not, you need a flashlight to go in the backyard.
Okay.
She's afraid to go in the backyard.
What about lighting on the house? There's lighting on the house behind you?
It's motion-detected, as far as I know, and it's, well, the new tenants like to leave all their lights on and windows open, but that's just interior lighting is leaking out, which is whatever.
Remind me again, John, all the maple trees that are around the property, they're being taken down, or they're existing, or they're there?
The tree is shown on the color rendering. Any trees that are adjacent to the property line are going to remain intact.
Right.
Just the interior trees are being removed.
And all of the lighting is mounted on the east and west facades, if you will, of the building, and below the eve line?
Correct.
So, it's between that eight- and nine-foot barrier?
Correct.
And there's no operation of this building after whatever, 9:00 or 8:00, 6:00, 7:00? What was it?
I would say 9:00, but I'd have to defer to the resolution drafted at the use variance, but from memory, I think it's 9:00.
And nothing before 6:00?
Seven.
Seven?
Yep.
And what's the width of the building?
One of the other things I think that you could do here is that they could throw the light north rather than south. Even down, down and north would be better than just down, right?
Well, right now, it's shining between the buildings, and between the building and the fence. The north would go towards the, I don't know, that would provide any utility to the site, you know, any security.
There's the light.
Mr. Chairman, I have the hours here from the variance, if you want to. Do you want to know?
Yep.
That is, hours of operation be limited to Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Saturday and Sunday, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, including local holidays.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I think I've expressed them all.
Is the color scheme that you're portraying on that rendering that's correct, the beige and green?
It's going with the tan and the red, similar to the Armitage Electrical Building.
Okay.
The same with the house.
Which looks, looks great. It does.
All right. All right, at this point, will anybody else wishing to speak in regards to this application from the public? Seeing none, close the public input portion. Thank you for dialoguing with us. I probably didn't follow exact protocol, but it was effective. Did you want to address any of the neighbors' concerns at this point, other than, I mean, to summate them or anything?
You know, the lighting, we've talked about. Screening, it's a six-foot board-on-board fence. I mean, most of the concern that we want to be is, we want to be good neighbors. As Nick has mentioned, came into this property as a very depressed property. You talk about police calls, I think there was over 100 calls in the last 10 years prior to us buying it. I'm not aware of any police calls to the property since we've owned it, so I think it's a cleaned-up property, and we continue to do so. We'll go outside after this meeting and exchange phone numbers if there's any concerns that we can address on the plan moving forward, or the operation of the property as it exists or gets built, we'll make sure we work with them. We don't want it to be an intrusive thing for them, so that's all I really wanted to add.
Okay.
Thanks.
What about snow removal?
Should...
Can I ask a question? Sometimes they put these up as a temporary situation, you know, five, 10 years, and they have a bigger plan down the line. You guys talked about that.
We don't have a phase two. We really don't want to expand. We think the house is a good buffer not to see the units, so we really don't have, no desire to have it be temporary. We want it to last a very long time, and as is, there's really not room to expand southeast or west at all.
Or put a different building up.
No.
Is there some reason the other neighbors weren't notified? I thought that you notified neighbors within 500 feet of the property.
I do. I mean, you got to be looking, I mean, you got to read your mail, but yeah, you get 500, within 500 feet, you get a postcard. I...
Okay.
I don't...
So, it's only 500 feet.
Oh, yeah.
But, but the...
It doesn't affect more than 500 feet.
And there's a posted sign.
Yes, there'd be a posted sign before that, before any public hearing on a property.
But I mean, 500 feet would hit a lot of these properties, though.
Well, I thought that this gentleman said that he made copies and put them out. If he did, then...
Well, yeah, but the thing is, is they should have, they should have received them...
Our town distributes the cards, right? They're not the applicant.
Yeah, they go in the mail.
Right. Some towns make the applicant distribute the cards, but in this case, the town did it.
This is the same, this is the same application as before. And it's just because of the time that's lapsed without any activity, or?
No, they went for a use variance, but then they actually, you know, they need a site plan approval, too.
But I thought we already gave them site plan approval.
Well, I think it was just recommendation to the board. It didn't get that far.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. I misremembered.
Any other questions of the applicant? I know you're probably displeased with the use next to it, but I do think they're trying to be as good as possible, put their development in there.
It's a business. It's Zoned Residential. That's what I don't understand.
Well, that's a use variance that was issued at a prior date.
Better than dilapidated cabins, I would concede that.
Okay. We need to do seeker. Part two has been filled out. There's no, nothing that indicates moderate to large impact may occur.
I'll make a motion that it's an unlisted action, negative declaration.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Confuse me.
You have a new member.
Seeker motion carries.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you may.
I move approval upon the matter of PB 1504-4, upon the matter of request by Land Tech, acting as agent for AS Washington LLS, for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct two mini storage buildings, a six-foot-high board-on-board fence, and related improvements on premises 670 Washington Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Second.
I'll second.
Mary already did, I believe.
Okay, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for investing in Roanoke.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
I don't have any white forms for the next ones.
It's a type two.
It's a type-two action.
Wait, what, we said unlisted, neg, dick. Didn't forget to circle that part.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
All right, can you introduce the next matter before us?
PB 1504-5, upon the matter of request by Dryer Giltnar Funeral Home, for signage approval to replace an existing freestanding sign and install a six-foot-high ornamental fence on premises 1717 Portland Avenue in a C business district.
Good evening. My name is Sean Giltnar, Dryer Giltnar Funeral Home. My father, Alan, is also here next to me. I'm here tonight to propose a new freestanding sign to replace the existing one. It would be groundlit, where the current one we have is externally lit, and also to put up a six-foot privacy fence in the back of our property that separates our property line from the Ridge Crest Court Apartments. It would be about 100 feet in the back part. There are, it wouldn't cover the whole part of the back property, because we do have some arborvitae trees that are on the other part from the house next door, so that's why we're not putting the fence all the way up the back, just from where the tree's end to the top, the southwest corner of the property. Also, at the last minute, we submitted some drawings for some entranceway lighting that would replace the 12-foot lights that we now have in the entranceways. We'd like to take those down and put up a probably four-by-four brick base, and then a small, little light that would be on top of that to replace the current parking lot lights, like I said, are 12 feet high now.
The entranceway and the exit, it was, unfortunately, we forgot to submit that, but all it's really doing is, we're dressing up our entranceway, we're dressing up the exit, and we're delighted signs that say exit, lighted sign that say entrance right in the brick. And the brick's going to be set back far enough, so when you exit, you know, if traffic's coming north or south on Portland Avenue, people, you know, the brick isn't going to keep you from seeing the cars. It's going to be setting back far enough. So, it's just a little upgrade. The lights that we have have been there since 1959, when we built the funeral home, so it's just a little upgrade from the entranceway and the exitway, and, you know, as it is now, people enter on the south side of the building, go around the back of the funeral home, and exit on the north side of the building. So, there's really nothing that says enter or exit, other than the arrows, and it just gives the public that are at the funeral home a little added, this is how you exit, so you don't have the confusion with the traffic coming in and going out.
You're going to have all that light from Dunkin' Donuts. You won't need all of it.
Yeah, I know. If they'd let me use that sign, that'd be better, too.
Well, I don't know if we can add an item like that to the application at this point, can we?
I just, we just got it. I haven't really had, I want to make sure I get a chance to review it. You know what I mean? I'll tell you what I don't, I'll be the first to tell you what I don't know, so I have to look at the code and take a look at it.
Issue with them, but I don't know that we can add it at the last...
Well, I had come in about two years ago and talked to the building department about it, and...
It could be incidental, but I don't even know.
They said that at the time, that because it was set back far enough, and it was, you know, from the sidewalk and that, that really it wasn't doing any harm with doing that, but again...
It may not be anything that we need to even...
That's the thing. I'm not even sure that...
It would require a planning board review. It could be viewed as incidental and not...
Just directional signage.
Okay, that's fine. You know, we can do that.
I don't know that off the top of my head, though, right now, without...
You know, I was going to say, if I, if we do, I would, to add this, I'd make it maybe subject to review by the planning board chairman and the director of development.
I mean, I just don't know that a light encased in a brick post is a planning board item.
I don't know either, and...
I mean, to me, it's not...
Off the top of my head. I usually look through the color.
I mean, there's an existing light there now. You're talking about the light that's already there?
Well, yes, well, I'm saying, what I'm saying is that it may not be, need to be put on here now, because it may not be to be reviewed by us at all.
Yeah, you may just need to permit, yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're saying.
I was just trying to save myself 50 bucks.
I mean, I don't know that I feel comfortable just adding it now, because it's not on the site plan, it's not a part of the application, it's not part of the notification, but on the same token, I don't know that it's something that we need to review once it's...
Oh, I'm sorry. I tend to agree. I just want to have, if tomorrow we can take a look at it and go through it and just make sure, but I tend to think you probably won't need...
That's fine.
How it's being lit, how it looks, what the size of it is.
I think the big thing is the fence in the back, and the, we're not changing the sign as far as, we're not moving it any closer to the sidewalk, and it's just, it's a little nicer appearance, but the big thing is the fence. I mean, I have a little problem with the apartments in the back, and I've tried to talk to them about it, and the school bus lets the kids off on Portland Avenue, which they're not supposed to, and the kids walk through our parking lot. I mean, they dump their garbage, we're constantly picking up papers, as it is, from the...
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts, yeah. And, but it's just, people come through with their strollers to get over to Brugers, and it just gives us a little more privacy there. I mean, when you got a funeral going, and you have people walking through, it doesn't look good.
They cut through constantly. It's just an ongoing problem.
We understand, I think. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
Nope. I think it's a great-looking fence and a good idea.
Yep.
Yeah.
The whole thing is good.
I like the whole thing.
Seeing no questions of the applicant, I'd like to open it up to public input at this point. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion. Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion.
We don't have to do seeker on this?
This is a type-two.
Type-two.
Type-two action.
No further action is needed for seeker.
Mr. Chairman, if, um, I'd like to make a motion on the matter of request, uh, by Dryer Giltnar Funeral Home for signage approval, replace existing freestanding signs to all six-foot-high mine ornamental fence on premises 1717 Portland Avenue, C business district. I'd, uh, I, I move approval and... No, I just move approval. I don't wanna do anything with the other thing.
There's no conditions. I don't know that I understand.
No conditions, including the, the light, right?
I don't know that the light would need to be something that we, planning board approval would be required.
I just move approval.
Second.
Thank you, Ray. And Jay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for investing in around the point. And I hope I don't see you. And I mean that in the nicest, sincerest way.
If, if you have to go there, you won't.
Except socially, then...
This funeral director put a sign in his front yard. He says, "Drive slow 'cause I could wait."
If you go there, you won't see him anyway.
You're right. All right, thank you very much.
Do we have to pay these guys for waiting us so long?
We had months with nothing and he had to come on the night when it got... Luck of the draw.
We're still here.
Town board referral? Upon the matter of request by Bonn Schnuck...
Shonik.
Schnuck, thank you. Schnuck and King acting as agent for Hudson Avenue LLC for a special use permit to operate a used car lot pursuant to section 235 28A 14 on premises 1661 Hudson Avenue in a C business district.
Ed, good evening. Uh, my name is Carl Essler. I'm an attorney with Bonn, Schnuck and King. And with me here tonight as well is David Applebaum, who's the owner of the owner, Hudson Avenue LLC of the property at, um, 1661 Hudson Avenue. Um, we're here tonight for a recommendation to the town board regarding an application that we have made for, um, a special use permit. Uh, I'll, I'll try to be, I think there needs to be a little history and I'll try to be very brief with it because I know we're late. Mr. Applebaum has owned the property, you know, for some time now. And previously, for a good number of years, um, tenants at the, at the site had operated, uh, special, under special permit only as a, um, a car repair garage, auto repair garage. Um, in, uh, inner about 2010, a former tenant, not the current tenant, uh, came, uh, before the, uh, the town board and got a special use permit to add, uh, an additional special permit use to allow the tenant in that space to use, um, uh, have 15 cars, additional cars for used auto sales. So there's actually, at this point, two special permits relating to the property. Um, I do have to tell you, we're gonna be very upfront about this. There have been problems. Town staff certainly knows about it. And the, um, the tenant did not abide very well by keeping the number of vehicles to what would have been allowed on the site. It was got very overcrowded, very messy. Town issued a number of citations. Um, my client, um, worked diligently, I think, talking to the town about how we could solve this problem. Let's just say many conversations with the tenant. Not of necessarily a pleasant nature. Uh, and town staff, Nick has been just great to work with, came up with the idea that, you know, maybe the best thing to do here is take this back to one special permit use. And so that's what we've done and we're, we're applying to the, uh, to the town board. Public hearing will be on May 21 to take this to just a special permit for used car sales and eliminate the auto repair shop. And what we've done, do you, by the, do you all have copies of this plan? Okay. As you can see, what, what we're asking for is the ability to have 47 vehicles on, on the, uh, the, uh, the parcel. It'll include employee parking. It'll include, uh, public parking and of course the used, the used cars, um, that are gonna be for sale. Uh, there will be no repair work done in that repair shop other than as used vehicles are brought in. If they have to be fixed up before they're put out for sale, that's the only repair work that'll happen, uh, in the shop. Uh, not, no public, uh, public repair will be taken yet. We actually think, well, I've got a couple of handouts that I think might be helpful for the board. If I can start them down this way. The first one, which you'll, well, you'll get shortly, just gives you an aerial overview of what this particular neighborhood is like. And, um, it's essentially commercially developed. Uh, it's in the C, this particular property, property is in the C, um, C business district. Uh, but as you can see, there is an apartment project, um, that slides around to the, uh, north and west of the site. However, there is a wooden fence that surrounds the three sides other than the front of this parcel, um, that provides some visual, uh, protection to the neighboring property. So essentially, uh, we think actually from a standpoint, and Nick can please weigh in, but I think we've, uh, we've done a pretty good job over the past couple of months of finally getting the tenant to, um, get things looking in order on that site. And my client has been very diligent about, um, making sure that that's the case.
No, you guys have been very responsive and there's obviously issues and that's how we got to this point, but the main thing we're striving for is compliance. The one thing we did check into on our side, I think Mr. Palermo brought up at the last meeting was, or someone did, on the bays and if they count as cars. As spots. So in essence, you'd be counting those against your lot count. So if you have 47 cars...
Well, that's where the, the map, um, shows external, um, the, the ability to externally park because you're not gonna park cars inside. That garage is still gonna be doing some work on...
But in theory, you could, because that's the way, and we, we looked into it, 'cause...
I think I remember the conversation when someone was...
Dave, run it to the microphone. Yep.
Man, do yourself.
I'm David Applebaum, the owner of the property and I've owned it since 1989. And I guess the concern, one of the concerns was is that people were gonna just park cars up against the back of the bays and, for some reason, in, in the evening and stuff like that.
Yeah, so instead of having 47 cars, in essence, you'd have 57 cars.
And just as a point of clarification, on the original, um, special use permit that was granted, the parking inside the building was counted toward the total lot parking coverage of the orig, of the original. So at the, at the time that the, or 2010, um, S U P was granted, it was that there were, um, the parking lot at the time had 56 spots, 14 spots inside the building and 42 outside, the way they configured it at the time of application. Um, and so the spots were, inside the building were counted toward the total.
That's something I was not aware of. Thank you.
We just, and we actually just found this as part of the research after the workshop ourselves, so...
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if they wanna add 47 plus the 10 internal, I don't think we would, I'm speaking for myself, but park as many cars inside.
Four of the spots, four of the 10 bays, four of them have equipment in there that would prohibit a car going in there, like an alignment machine or something like that.
But you could still put a vehicle on the alignment machine and leave it there.
I guess you could, yes.
So I guess the question would be to just, to be clear, you'd almost just add, either add 10 or take away 10. You know what I mean? I think you got...
And I think, and I guess we would...
Basically, those spots have to be accounted for in some way.
And I guess our, our preference would be...
Whatever way you...
Our preference would be to add, you know, whatever's gonna happen. I, I don't think, I don't think they're gonna...
There's 47 vehicles, including staff and visitor parking at the exterior, and 10 or...
That would be, that would be fine with us.
There's 10 overhead doors in the back. They said there was 14 internal. I think they're talking about the two overhead doors on the front. Probably could park cars inside there, so it's 10 to 14 internal parking spots.
Well, recently, the, the front has been used as a, what do you call it, dollop or...
Yeah, the building, yes, the building, the, the interior of the building now.
See, I think what's happened if you...
It's used essentially for dollop repairs to used cars before they're put out for sale.
Right, but it's...
If you said you had, I'm sorry.
It's feasible to, to be halfway through doling up a car and leaving it in there overnight.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's feasible to have, uh, halfway through an alignment and leaving the car there overnight. So you do have, uh, room for 10, another 10 cars inside without a problem.
Right, and that would be fine with us if, if you, if the board was fine with that.
And I think as, as, as was said here, that maybe, you know, of, of 47 plus 10 or 47 plus whatever you think inside. And we, we know that we're looking...
Well, if you wanna limit, if you wanna just say no more than 10, we're happy with that inside.
It's up to you.
We're fine with that.
I mean, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, this board's job is to provide a recommendation to the town board.
Right.
And the town board ultimately will have to come to a conclusion based upon this and other factors, whether or not the number of cars they think is appropriate. But they give a lot of weight on these issues to the planning board for the obvious nature of what the discussion is.
I think what you need to be careful of when you go before the town board is that if you say you have 47 cars on site and you have five cars inside, you'd be not in compliance again. If you had 47 cars outside...
Correct. And we can clarify that, um, we're not, we're not to the town board till the 21st so we can get something into them that clarifies that.
Okay, I got a question. You, you've got a tremendous amount of equipment in those bays and so forth. You're talking about alignment machines, lifts, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. That's where we don't see it as really being used very extensively for quote-unquote parking, but...
I mean, you know, I, I grant you that, but that's a tremendous investment. And I know you have to do warranty work, whether it be 30-day, 90-day, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, under a hundred thousand, over, you know, the whole thing. I'm just curious, and I, you don't even have to answer this question, I guess. How do you get the return on that? I mean, without doing labor? Because in the used car business, no matter what you tell me, Joe, my mechanic, makes me come back to buy a car from Tom, my sales guy. You know, it's the whole philosophical thought process. And you're gonna tell me legitimately, you'll never do any repairs other than warranty work?
We will certainly make every diligent endeavor to make sure that doesn't happen. And let's put it this way, uh, we have a tenant that's on what I would call a, should, let's just say a short leash. Um, and, uh, may not be the, the tenant that's gonna be there for a whole long time. Uh, and Mr. Applebaum is very serious about making sure that we're in compliance here.
I just have to ask, because...
No, that's a fair question.
We've, we've had questions with other... Well, I, I can also answer that. The, the equipment, uh, there's been four tenants there and I've, I've owned the building since 89 and there's been four mechanical garages there that have all failed for a whole bunch of reasons. And I think a lot of cars have become more sophisticated. People take their cars usually back to the dealers or places that have invested in their equipment and stuff like that to keep upgrading and, because cars are little computers riding around and stuff like that. So a lot of the equipment in there and the lifts and also the hydraulic lifts and the front-end machine are all stuff that I've kind of acquired as everybody has left over the last 15 years. So really, what the tenant ended up was, was a fully equipped garage from four other tenants. So, I mean, so, so return on investment, at, at this point, the, the equipment's better staying there than me having to move it somewhere.
And by the way, the tenant...
I hate to ask, because you do have the equipment.
Great question. Great question.
It's a great way to derive income.
Yep.
Any other questions of this applicant? Jay?
Well, just following up on Ray's question, I'm not sure that, I, I'm not sure that you'll ever be able to totally monitor that. I, I, if, if, if it's the same tenant that you've had issues with, then it sounds like there's some issues of trust and I don't know that those issues are gonna just go away because the, the calendar changed or the use changed.
The tenant...
Now, it's not allowed. The permit is gonna be that it's not allowed.
Correct.
If you find it that it is, then they're in violation.
And, and the tenant may change at that point.
If I'm doing warranty work or I'm doing service work. You walk in there as an inspector, you don't know. So that's, that's the point.
I'll have to set up a sting operation.
We'll plow snow into the bays.
Well, one thing, I mean, one thing is the signs outside and things of that nature that we're advertising, the commercial, those are, those have been taken away.
Yes.
And, you know, I think obviously there'll be some more scrutiny paid to how many cars are being parked there. And it'll be kind of, you know, while there is no foolproof way of investigating it, it'll become rather self-evident if there's more than just, uh, the used car sales.
I mean, if he does a good job at used car sales, he'll make more money selling cars, then he will be using the garage for...
He's been there two years and, and he, he's, at least tells me he's doing a good business and would like to remain there.
Yeah, the prior tenant actually went bankrupt.
Right, well, so, um, and as I said, I've had a lot. I've probably met with him over a dozen times since the first of the year, just saying, okay.
Well...
Does this have to come back to us, Mr. Chairman?
That we just continually address.
Does it have to come back to us?
The, um, one of the things that I, I noticed was that, um, there appeared to be vehicles there that were being stored awaiting, uh, they were wrecks. Uh, awaiting someone to come and take them out. Is, or is this just my imagination working here?
No, I don't think so. You may see in the back some...
In the back.
Cars that are a little rough-looking. Those are ones maybe he bought at the auction that he'll bring in and he'll...
And fix up.
Doll up. He'll put the brakes on it. He'll do whatever he's gotta do to get it running and it'll be on the lot for $49.95.
It's certainly legal to buy a car at auction, that he buys at auction and fixes it in any way, shape or form with the tools that are inherent within the building and then sell it.
That's how all those people...
Correct. That's the way we perceive it. Correct.
So we're not legislating against that. I mean, he can certainly wrench on anything, any way, shape or form, bodywork included, if he...
There's no, there's no bodywork equipment there anymore.
Yeah, that was closed. The fire marshal verified it was all shut down. That's a different permit and...
So, I mean, any mechanical issues before he puts it for sale is purview to allow him to do that.
It just has to be inspectable and from the dealer's perspective, you wanna be able to get beyond that 30-day or 90-day warranty period without it coming back to you. Then it becomes somebody else's problem.
But in a, even, in a, in a used car or a new car business, there's gotta be a reasonable use for stuff. They need to, they need to change tires. They need to put a new tire on, uh, so they, they need that equipment. They need equipment for an alignment if it's out. They need equipment to, to change in lub, lubricant oil, align the car. Those are the kinds of things that if, if you bought it at the auction and it needed those things, you gotta do it before you put it on the lot.
Well, the point being, and you've ascertained this and told us this, that they're not doing any mechanic work for hire for, except as it relates to the used car sales, so...
That's a, that's been our, that's been Dave's diligent, diligent expectation.
Any other questions as it relates to mechanic work at this used car sales location? Any other questions, the applicant? Rich, Jay, Ray?
Who's, uh...
Bernie?
I'm sorry.
Oh, we got one.
Are they gonna need, uh, to go through seeker?
Yeah, they will with the town board.
It's town board.
Here, this is a recommendation, so you won't need to do seeker.
All we're doing is giving a positive or negative referral to the town board to allow this use.
Okay.
The special permit. Bernie? You gonna take your car there to get it repaired, Bernie? No, you're not, because it's not gonna have a thing.
Should be an easy answer.
You should have answered immediately.
It was a trick question.
Mary?
No.
Michael?
I've taken my car there. We'll keep our eyes open for you.
I was a religiously taking my cars to Harry and Gordy's in the past, but that's long gone.
That's who I bought the building from, from Harry and Gordy.
All right, are we willing to give a positive referral to the town board to allow this to be specially permitted as a used car?
I'll second the positive referral.
And did you guys make the note about the indoor/outdoor parking?
I put on here the conditions or suggestions of the 47 cars, including staff and visitor parking at the exterior, plus 10 interior parking locations.
And we'll confirm that in writing, um, with the town before we go to the planning, to the town board.
And then just if you can verify that the parking spot, uh, design is gonna conform to town code requirement for off...
Yes, they're, they're nine by, I think nine by 18.
Okay, thank you. You might just wanna...
Yeah, if you, look at, if you scale them out on the drawing, they are.
The motion was by Richie, but the second was by... including staff and visitor parking at the exterior, plus 10 interior parking locations.
Yeah, it's only fair.
Good.
And we'll confirm that in writing, um, with the town before we go to the planning, or the town board.
And then just if you can verify that the parking spot, uh, design is gonna conform to town code requirement for off...
Yes, they're, they're nine by, I think, nine by 18.
Okay, thank you. You might just wanna...
Yeah, if you, look, if you scale them out on the drawing, they are.
Yeah.
The motion was by Richie, but the second was by Lucas?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a few questions, just for clarification? Would you mind?
Yes.
It would be helpful to know how many cars are for employees, how many are for customers, how many handicap spaces, and how many that leaves you for cars? Like, right now, you get a 15. What does that bring you to? 'Cause the board will wanna know how many they're moving.
We'll, we'll have five employees.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get some...
You should designate on your map...
Yes, we'll get some information on that.
Visitor, employee, and handicap parking.
I think that's a great suggestion.
That way they'll know the number and feel comfortable.
Yep.
Well, they had it on an earlier site plan.
Well, that's not on this one.
I know it wasn't on this one, but there was an earlier iteration that had it on there.
Maybe you should get that for them.
We'll, we'll get something put together.
They, they'll probably like to see the dumpster enclosure, too, to make sure it fits. You have, you have a spot for it.
The dumpster's there, it has been.
The dumpster's there. We're not removing that, that's part of the site plan. This is for the cars. So if you could show that on the...
The dumpster's in bad shape. It is in bad shape.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Seeing none, motion carries, positive referral. Thank you for investing in Rondicore.
Have a great evening. Have a great evening, it's been a long one.
Good night. Motion to close?
Nope, we have meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the February 23rd, 2015, meeting board...
No. What are you doing with that?
Minutes with one change. On the approval of minutes from the previous meeting, Mr. McDonald's name is spelled wrong.
Oh, thank you for noticing.
Where is that?
Approval of minutes, a motion by board member McDo-nul...
McDonald? Where's the back page?
Approval of minutes, yeah.
Yeah, approval of minutes, second to the last item.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman. That's actually the car salesman.
I was absent, so...
Don't you have something to move?
What? The German.
Do we have, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So Blocky Hollenbeck, McDonald, Palermo, Plucus, and Richie. Richie McDonald. Do I have a motion to adjourn?